Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Gina, if you'd report out, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Emeryville City Council met in closed session on the item listed on the closed session agenda. Regarding item 5.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
It is 6:27, and I adjourn the special closed session meeting. And I jump to the right agenda for the special meeting. Sherri, are you ready for me to just roll into it?
One moment, please.
Okay, that's why I checked.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, it is 6:28. I will call to order the special meeting in the city council, and because I don't see everybody, I'm gonna have to do a roll call.
Councilmember Bouters.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue. Oh, not back quite yet. Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Pats.
Here. Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the final agenda?
They're moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Do I have a member, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez, second from Member Bouters.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue is absent. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, any ex parte communication? Seeing none, I really would love to see if Member Donahue had any. Okay, let's go ahead and go, oh, Member Bouters, go ahead.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I had to pull up the other agenda. I did receive, I think we all received emails about the applications that were withdrawn. I also received an email from Celeste Burrows in support of Ken Bukowski on 6.2.3, and I received a phone call from Brian Donahue regarding 6.2.6.
There with me as I get there. Okay. Anybody else have any ex parte? Right. Seeing none, we will go into the, sorry, I lost my place, their public comment. Sherri, should I read the public comment statement now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would like to, oh, I didn't do the introduction. I'll go and do the introductory remarks as well. "I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers, provided under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main city of Emeryville website at www emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting by using the Raise Your Hand function visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as via e-notification and on social media. Now is time for the public to comment, for the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to the items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please reuse the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments."
There are no online speaker cards, however, I do see a raised hand. It's one of the applicants, so I'm gonna check in with her just to see if she has a public comment or if she's just waiting for her turn to be interviewed, so.
And while you do that, I'll acknowledge that Member Donahue has joined the meeting.
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Berens.
Hi.
Did you have a public comment or are you just waiting for your interview?
No, I, is the blue hand that says lower hand the off-hand or the on-hand?
It's when you want to ask a question. So if you don't have a question or a public comment at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and go on with the meeting.
No, the question was, it says lower hand or raise hand. And right now, I've got lower hand in my, on my screen. Does that mean that it's not showing up on your screen?
No, it's showing, it's showing up, but do you have a question at this point, other than that?
Not, so I will change it back to the other one. Thank you.
I can do that for you. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so we are now to action items. And the first item up is the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to share the Planning Commission questions, or does everybody have those handy?
I have them handy. I can't speak for everyone else. Raise your hand if you wanna, if you're on council and you want us to share the questions. Seeing none, we all have them. We are good.
Okay.
I'd like to say that Eugene Sway called me while I was absent.
Oh.
And he is having trouble getting onto the meeting, and I have his phone number, if that would help, Sherri.
He is on the meeting and has been the whole time. He's just muted right now, so he's fine.
Okay. I'm sure he just heard that, which is good.
Yes.
Good. Okay. We all settled in now?
Yes.
Given all the technical difficulties, is everybody okay if I just ask the questions? Perfect.
Yes.
Two thumbs up plus mine now, four. Okay, good. And so I'm gonna go in the order they are listed. So is Zoe here?
She is, and she's enabled to talk, so she's ready to go.
Thank you for joining us. We're gonna do a quick interview with you. We haven't set any time parameters around this, but I'm gonna go and ask you the questions. I will say be thorough but brief. We have a lot of people to appoint this evening. So, oh, I'm sorry. You have two minutes each for your personal statement and interview questions. I should read the directions. "So, why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, experience, and including any past civic involvement."
Good evening, Mayor Pats and members of the council. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to interview for the Planning Commission. My name is Zoe Chaff. I'm a six-year resident of the North Emeryville Doyle Street District. I currently work as Technical Lead for Air Quality at an organization called C40, which is a network of 96 cities around the world that work on climate action. So I help cities to integrate air quality and climate action planning. I'm interested in serving on the Planning Commission because I feel that Emeryville is at a real crossroads right now. There are so many opportunities for our city to grow and become an even greater example for what a vibrant, connected, affordable, inclusive city can look like. I would draw on my experience in academia. I have a PhD in Energy and Resources and an PhD in Public Health. I served on the Public Health Chapter of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change for their Fifth Assessment Report. I also have local civic experience. I worked briefly with the City of Oakland on health and safety analysis related to a proposed court project there. More recently, I've served for a few years now on the Emeryville Parks and Recreation Committee, and that experience has been wonderful. I've been pleased to serve alongside Member Donahue and would like to continue to be involved in helping the city to evolve.
Great, thank you. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
So I think first and foremost, the planning commissioners are instructed to take guidance from the city's general plan and to help to solve questions and think about issues related to planning regulations. But I really see the role as being one of thinking through creative solutions to city planning and to bringing forward a view of what we want our city to be like over the coming years. So as we make important decisions about housing, about connectivity, about how we move around our city, about the types of businesses that we'd like to see here, I believe that the Planning Commission is the place where many difficult decisions can be made, and I'm ready and eager to face those decisions.
Thank you. Describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
So in the general plan, there are a set of guiding principles, and I won't read through all of them, but I'll say that a few of them really resonate with me. For example, that the city will become a connected place, that it will have an enhanced and connected open space network and green streets, that there will be a diversity of transportation modes available, and most importantly perhaps, that we will have a diverse, balanced, and inclusive community. And so I really see this as, you know, sort of a vision that's laid out, and I think that we're in the process now of thinking through exactly what that looks like in practice. I've also reviewed the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I noted that there are a number of different mitigation measures that have been laid out for the next five years. I think some of those work very well with the climate action plan that the city put together and will be important in considering projects and decisions before the planning committee over the next few years.
Great, thank you. Give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process. Please explain why.
I was delighted to learn about the new Family Matters Shelter on San Pablo at 43rd in the old recreation center site. So proud of Emeryville for hosting this project, proud of the Planning Commission and the council for pushing this forward. To me, it really represents an innovative use of space, a good sense of community collaboration, some problem solving around community communication at the beginning of the project, and really a focus on serving the most vulnerable communities within our community. I understand that it's not a permanent solution, but I think that that makes it even more exciting that we're thinking through ways that things can be done now and can potentially lead to more exciting initiatives in the future.
Great, thank you. As an example of design, you picked one that was utilitarian, and that speaks to me, so thank you. Okay, this is follow-up questions time. I will just go around and see if any members have questions. Just wave at me. Not all at once, please. Okay, oh, Member Donahue.
How can you imagine our city going forward in the next few years, given our economic reality? In other words, our capital budget is just getting us through. Do, do we, in a way, your previous example was a good example of how we're getting through, using, reutilizing a structure. But imagine what life is like with a very low capital budget in the immediate future. What would you say?
Yeah, really interesting question. So it's one that I'm honestly thinking about at work right now because so many of the cities around the world are having to deal with the same issues. And so, you know, as we look at how they can approach air quality, are they gonna have money to invest in air quality monitoring systems? That may not rise to the top of their list at this point, and perhaps it shouldn't. But I think that looking for innovative solutions where we can get a project started, even if it's not perfect, that we can move towards those goals of providing affordable housing, of thinking through what will draw and retain families in Emeryville, how we can start to bring more bicycles and walkers onto the street, you know, encourage low-impact transportation. Even if it's not a permanent solution, we can try things out for a relatively low budget, and hopefully that will provide some indication of when funds do become available, ways that it can be built out or expanded to new areas.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the council? Okay. So I want to thank you. We, please stay on the line. We will be making a decision shortly. For that, I want to go back to the city clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more question. You have a chance. Anything you want to add or any closing remarks to help us in our deliberations?
No, just thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your leadership in what you've done for the city. I think post-COVID, we're gonna have a lot of interesting, potentially difficult decisions and some shifting priorities as people see the need for more use of open space and more space for bicycling and walking. So look forward to continuing my engagement with Emeryville. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right. So Sherri, let me know when we're ready to go with Douglas Miguel Guerrero.
He just needs to unmute, and he'll be ready to go.
Hello, this is Miguel.
Thank you for joining us. So I'm gonna ask you some questions. You have 15, 20 minutes here. I've got four questions, follow-ups, and then a closing remark. So limit your answers to about two minutes each, and if you're all set, we'll go ahead and begin. "Why are you interested in serving in the city's planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement."
Thank you, Mayor Pats. So I'll start by introducing myself as, and what I do in my professional life. I work with the City and County of San Francisco, with the San Francisco Department of Environment, as a communications coordinator. So my experience on the day-to-day, working with city government, within city government, and being able to communicate to the public what their priorities are, is my main role in my day-to-day work with the City and County of San Francisco. Since moving to Emeryville here in 2013, I've sought out ways to stay involved here in the community. So I started with my work with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, where I eventually became the chair of that committee, and really proud of the work that we were able to do there, navigating for pedestrian and bicycle safety here in our city. And then I continued on to be voted on by the council members here to the Planning Commission three years ago. And so during my time in the Planning Commission, I was able to serve as the vice chair my second year on the commission, and now currently serving as a chair on the commission. Beyond the things highlighted there, I have a genuine interest in transportation planning and micro-mobility and using different modes of transportation to get around, and that's definitely one thing that drew me to Emeryville as a resident.
Great, great, thank you. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
Yeah, I'd say the first thing as a planning commissioner really is to listen and hear what the community has to say about different projects and understand where, what people's interests are and what feedback we're receiving to really develop projects that fulfill the need of the community in ways that make it safer, healthier, more vibrant place to live for everybody. And so considering feedback from community members, I mean, they're really giving feedback on projects as they come to applicants so that we can ensure that the future of our city is one that's even better than now. So I see as a listener, somebody that's thinking about the future of our city, and then also guided by the general plan. It's a foundation that's already been built for us.
Great, thank you. Describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
Yeah, and so there are 10, and a lot of what the general plan highlights in terms of the guiding points are what drew me to live here. Livable neighborhoods, more connected place, vibrant urban community. And I'm living right across the street from the Public Market Project, and before that was really starting to come together. That was something I was excited to see that Emeryville was moving forward with. It was a LEED-certified project in a large neighborhood scope, which wasn't, up to that point, something that happened regularly in other cities. And so I think that Emeryville's done a really great job in terms of being like forward-thinking, and in doing that, the most recent the most recent document that's been approved by the city council is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update. And I would say that in terms of preparing for the future, that speaks to that as well, in addressing climate change and some of the challenges that may occur with different natural disasters.
Great, thank you. Give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process, and please explain why.
Yeah. The one that the last applicant mentioned is one that I really, I feel really good about in terms of finding housing for for people that are typically underserved and that really need some extra support as they're in transition. Additionally, another larger-scale project that I had the privilege of working in on would be the Sharon Woolmwood Project. I'm really proud of that project because I think that it speaks to the direction that Emeryville's taking. It connects that part of the city to Bay Street, which is a huge shopping corridor for our city, makes it more walkable and bikeable. And there's a huge park there that's gonna be available for all the residents that live nearby, in addition to the ones that we're adding. And so I think that that project, it reminds me of the beginnings of the Public Market Project, and I'm excited about seeing that come together.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, follow-up questions from city council members, if anybody wants to just wave at me? Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, I want to thank you for your answers. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your service. This is your chance to add anything as a closing remark to help us in our deliberations, so I hand the floor over to you.
Yeah, you got it. Well, the first thing I want to acknowledge is that this time around, it looks like we have some really solid applicants that are excited about working with our city, so I'm looking forward to that and hope that I get the opportunity to work with them. And in terms of my commitment to the city, you know, is when I moved here, I wanted to stay involved. I've continued to do that in a lot of different ways, and really excited about the work that I've been doing on the Planning Commission over the last three years. So at this point, you know, I'm looking forward to continuing that work. I feel as though I've been able to gain the respect of the city staff and my colleagues on the commission, and that says a lot in terms of just the rapport that we've been able to build and the projects that we're able to move forward. So I want to continue that work and hope that you all agree with that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next up is Marshall Huggins.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna check in with one of the participants. I can't tell from their screen name who they are. So the person that's on as JNEGL, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and telling me your name, please.
John Suter.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. We'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
So I don't have Marshall. I do have Dylan Terrell, who is the next person on your list.
Great. All right, so Dylan, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I am going to read you four questions. You have about two minutes per question to answer, and then there'll be follow-up questions, and then you'll give a closing statement. Does that work for you?
Yep, that's great.
Great, thank you. So we'll start with the background question. "Why are you interested in serving on the city planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement."
Great, and thank you, Mayor Pats, and the rest of the council. So I'm interested in serving on the Planning Commission to help Emeryville create and maintain mixed-use sustainable spaces that I believe all residents can enjoy. Emeryville, to me, I mean, has a long history of being an industrial and employment-first city. Currently, as I understand it, about 40% of the city is devoted to commercial industrial space, whereas around 20% is reserved for housing. I'd like to be a part of this, to help shape Emeryville into a dynamic and livable mixed-use city that has a focus on the future of all its residents and visitors alike. So for my background, I lived in Emeryville for the past two and a half years. I previously lived in neighboring Berkeley in San Francisco. I originally hailed from Massachusetts, where I grew up in a small town with a rich Native American history called Nashbee, much like Emeryville. I attended a state university, the University of Massachusetts, where I studied finance and African-American studies. I volunteered in local organizations in the Bay, such as the Berkeley EA, the Berkeley Food and Housing Project, and the Berkeley Youth Alternatives Community Garden Program. I've held numerous leadership positions in public companies, or sorry, private and public companies, including my current position as the founder of a social impact startup called the SAC, which provides sustainable access to capital to East African businesses. I believe strongly in sustainability and inclusion of all people across socioeconomic statuses, ages, and ethnicities, and I believe city planning to be the culmination of my interests and expertise. Really, you know, having the ability to make long-lasting change in communities by providing sustainable and accessible resources to everyone.
Great, thank you. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
Sure. So I guess from like a technical perspective, the way that I understand it is the Planning Commission plays a central role in the planning process of a city. I guess in three important ways. So first, as an advisory board to the city council on all planning and development issues. Second, the commission assures that the general plan is implemented. And then third, the commission functions as a decision-making body facing the public for issues relating, or proposals relating to city planning. And overall, in my understanding, and a planning commissioner is a steward to the community, has a fiduciary responsibility that the city is being developed with a long-term health and I guess prosperity of the community in mind, ensuring especially the last section of the general plan implementation is done with an emphasis on sustainable development and benefiting all members of the community.
Great, thank you. Describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
Sure. So from my understanding, and as other applicants have mentioned, the general plan covers seven elements as required by state law, plus two additional urban design and sustainability. There's 10 guiding principles of the plan. In summary, a connected and fine-crained city with diverse transportation modes that is built sustainably, which results in a vibrant, diverse, balanced, and inclusive community. The plan timeline is inclusive up until 2030. It includes a general plan, not necessarily specific, but a little bit more general at a high level to how to accommodate a population and housing increase of over 60% in that timeline. There's a large emphasis on the redevelopment of existing underutilized land, given that only about 4% of the city is currently vacant. And then going forward a little bit in more detail, there's, the overall plan, I guess, is broken down into seven overarching sections. So talking about everything from land, transportation, parks and open spaces, urban design, conservation, sustainability, and then finally implementation. There's a heavy focus, as I mentioned before, on creating a, you know, mixed-use city that has an overall balance of uses, multimodal transportation that's really focused on sustainability.
Great, thank you. Give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or the community process, and then please explain why.
Sure. So for this one, it's the Emeryville Center for Community Life. It's something that I've used personally a lot, belonging to a few different rec leagues that use a recreation center as a place of congregation. For design, I mean, I was enticed by incorporation of a few different sustainability features, including, I think it was daylight and natural ventilation, as well as a few active systems for water conservation and solar panels. But really, what it comes down to for me is this is a place where people of all ages and backgrounds can come together and access services of, you know, educational health, family, and recreation services, just in one place. I mean, really a place where I can see it transforming the quality of life for everyone in Emeryville. Something that I've seen personally firsthand, and I think a lot of other people get a benefit out of it as well.
Thank you. Follow-up questions from the city council? Three, two, one, okay. Well, thank you for your answers. I think that was good. I won't hold the ECCL comment against you. The, this is your chance for closing remarks and to assist us in our deliberations, anything you think we need to know or want to share with us.
Sure, sure. So I guess I'll leave you with this. Really, I mean, if you're looking for somebody with technical expertise and I guess a deep understanding of city and urban planning, I'm probably not the right fit. I'm not an architect, nor did I study urban planning. However, if you're looking for somebody with, I guess, passion, who really cares about equity and sustainability, who will make thoughtful decisions, and I believe I'm a strong choice. I believe that my lack of technical expertise lends my ability to bring new ideas to the planning commission, really without bias. Anything technical I don't know, or anything about the ECCL that I don't know, I'll devote my Anything technical I don't know, or anything about the ECCL that I don't know, I'll devote myself to learning. Overall, I mean, I'd be an advocate for affordable housing, sustainability, community diversity, and favoring active transportation, and trying to do so in a budget-constrained mindset. Thank you.
So thank you for your time. You know what? Don't sell yourself short. You came prepared and were ready to go, so it showed. Thank you for your time. We believe we have one more person up, Sherry, and that's Mr. Sway.
Yes, one moment, please.
Member Donahue, did I get his pronunciation correct?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Sway, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
Excellent, thanks.
We're going to ask you four questions, you have about two minutes each, and then we're going to do follow-up questions from a very inquisitive city council. And then you'll have an opportunity for a closing remark to cover anything that we didn't quite get to. Take about two minutes per question, and you, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am.
Great, the first one is the background question. Why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, and include any past civic involvement.
I've just come back from a twenty-one-year stay in China, where I was involved in developing and internationalizing the education system of China, the architecture and the city planning systems of China. I've designed two cities myself. One was a small township about the size of Emeryville, and it was a true zero-energy town. It was for indigenous tribe of people in southeastern China. And another was a city that was designed in such a way as to have no ownership in the properties and was done by consensus, that all of the decision-making was done by consensus, and education was the central hub of the city. And what I'd like to do, the reason I want to be a planning commissioner is that I want to emphasize the health, fitness, and ecology aspects of Emeryville, the educational aspects of Emeryville, the housing topic, and job creation. So I see these four headings as the interdisciplinary dynamic for strengthening the the character of Emeryville. I, my personal goal is to make Emeryville a model city for the world. And how to do that is by contributing the knowledge I have for materials and architecture and design, for education. I have an interdisciplinary PhD from UC Berkeley in architecture and education. I attended Columbia University Graduate School, and I was mentored by the former the former head of planning at the city of San Francisco, and also the Green Belt Alliance nonprofit of the Bay Area. I've been involved with education in China by internationalizing their, one of their largest cities, Shenzhen, where I was in charge of two hundred and seventy-five thousand students, seventeen thousand teachers, and a hundred and fifty-five schools. I'd like to take that experience and apply it to Emeryville because I think the central issue of Emeryville for its true true development comes from education. We've got to make the school a central topic of development in Emeryville. And I've studied some of the most innovative townships in the world, Curitiba, Brazil, Singapore, and New Zealand. And these are all cities in which they have proved that by caring for this education of children, you create a renewed city.
That's a nice, that's a good segue into our next question. Which is, what do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
By targeting, by recognizing and targeting, what are the issues that are, that are not making the goals of Emeryville, the city of Emeryville, come to pass? And then making recommendations about those issues to the city council. So I see the planning commissioner as a person that is a kind of a troubleshooter for the city that makes recommendations in which important decisions are then made by the city council.
Great. All right, thank you. Describe your knowledge of our general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the last two years.
Well, I see the city, the general plan, as a series of goals. For instance, making the districts cohesive, livable neighborhoods, connection between people, bicycles, pedestrians, open space, and making the city a walkable city with its diversity and its character. I think the city of Emeryville could be so much more than what it is, and that's what my goal is. We could be a world-renowned city if we, if we took charge of the chance for innovation for, for the kind of daring spirit we need to address issues that are true to all cities of the world. And I see that my responsibility is to be a reminder that those kinds of characteristics should always be addressed and always point to both education, climate change, and ecology, and job creation. We have to recognize what's, what was coming in the future. And it's a, it's a very sad state. It's very urgent that we deal with, for instance, the sea level rise, the plastic dust that's everywhere in what we breathe and in our plants, in our food, everything. These are very, very serious and urgent issues that we need to address and may need to make part of the goals of the city.
Great, all right, thank you. Give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or the community process. Please explain why.
Well, I'm going to choose the ONI project as that example because that's an example of what we ought not to do because that example shows what the builder mentality could do to destroy the environment of Emeryville. It does so by, and I've calculated this, the CO2 discharge of that building is going to be twenty-one tons of CO2 toxic gas a day. That's equivalent to seventeen hundred cars driving per day. The amount of energy wasted through the class is about sixty to seventy percent per day. There's a sense of alienation, the diversity of people in the building, the missed opportunity for for bringing people together. For instance, there's nothing that, no activities that would bring people from all over the Bay Area to come to Emeryville to, to, to partake in. So I see that that becomes an example of what not to do. Are we, we live in a climate where we don't need air conditioning, heating, and ventilation, mechanical systems that are primary, the primary reason for the tremendous pollution that we have in this area. So we need to, you know, create, start in the direction of creating buildings and neighborhoods that deal with our future problems, which are very urgent at this point.
Well, thank you. All right, this is the chance for other council members to ask follow-up questions. Member Bouters.
Thank you, Mr. Sway Eugene. You know, listening to your last answer, one of the functions, I'm a former planning commissioner, of the planning commission is to be objective. And you've now given us a very personal point of view on a project that is in study session before the planning commission. It hasn't reached the council. The council has not opined on it. And so I'm just wondering how you believe you'd be able to fulfill the position of a planning commissioner if you've made statements and you take positions on things before they're finally resolved and put into an application form? Because right now, it's just a, an item up for discussion, but your statements reflect an opinion already, so how would you be objective?
I would state the calculations that I make, I would keep it very objective by addressing issues that are undeniable, to stay with the facts. I've purposely put my own personal opinion into it. But as a planning commissioner, I would make sure that I'm stating the facts and present the facts to the city council for their decision. It's actually quite easy to make the calculations, to show how much embedded energy a project has, if we're talking about that, that project, and to show examples of other cities that have gone in the same direction and, and did not, were not successful in, in supporting that kind of development.
All right, thank you. Other questions from council members? All right. Thank you for your time. I think you gave us a lot to think about. This is your chance to give us a very brief, please keep it to about a minute, we've gone long here, closing remark or anything you think we need to know.
I have a closing remark. I just want to remind everyone that, that we have the potential for the city of Emeryville to become a world-renowned city. Even our general plan says this is a gateway. This is a gateway. It's not just a gateway to East Bay. It's a gateway to the future. And it's our responsibility to create a path to that future. And so that's what motivates me to be a part of this team effort to direct ourselves to the future because that future is, is filled with many, many challenges. And those challenges have to be addressed immediately because they will affect not only our generation, but the future generations to come. And I'm very, I think we're in a very dire situation. So I, I, I want to remind us that we are moving in that direction, and we've got to address those issues.
Great, great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Okay, I think from there, what I'd like to do is take public comments, and then we'll have a discussion. So, Sherry, do we have any public comments on this side, or has anybody raised their hand?
We do not.
Okay. So I think I'm going to throw it, would anybody like to start our discussion on this? Or make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Member Bouters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to appoint Douglas Miguel Guerrero and Zoe Chaffee to the Planning Commission for a term commencing July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll take it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Donahue, did you wish to say something?
Well, I was hoping to comment prior to a motion. Is it too late for me?
No, go ahead. We'll take your time.
I think in a low-capital environment that we're going to have in the next few years, there are some innovative ideas that Mr. Sway has been involved in with our city that could make a difference in the long-term future of our city. They are, could be demonstrations, and I just see that there's something to be said about innovating in difficult times. And I see in two of our candidates, a real innovative possibility in Eugene Sway and Zoe Chaff. I just think that they are for difficult times like we're going to be experiencing, capable of very innovative, innovative thinking and projects that might really benefit our city.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a counter motion of nominating Eugene Sway and Zoe Chaff.
Okay, and do we have a second on that motion? Okay, with no second, that motion dies. And I will go to Sherry for a roll call vote on the first motion.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Patz.
Aye. Okay, thank you, and I want to welcome Zoe to the, to the Planning Commission, and congratulate Miguel on being reappointed. For the rest of you who applied, I think we had some strong applicants, and I want to thank Mr. Terrell and Mr. Sway for your excellent jobs, and please don't be dissuaded from applying forever for other positions with the, with committees in the city. All right. Community Advisory Committee appointments is, I am six point two. First point, first up is six point two point one, which is the B-PED Committee.
B-PAC.
Thank you. B-PAC Committee. One, two, three, four, five. I see five applicants and five openings. Am I reading that correctly?
There is one, one note to make, that there are five applicants. They all qualify as community members, but nobody currently qualifies as a business representative. You have an item on a future agenda where you might be discussing recommendations by the B-PAC, but for these purposes now, you can appoint four community members.
Okay.
And we have Celeste Burrows ready to go.
Okay, and we do not have questions for this? We just let them come?
If they'd like to, yes.
All right, so Ms. Burrows, you're up first, if you want to make a short statement.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I've lived in Emeryville twenty-five years, and I've been on B-PAC for about ten years. And I'm also an avid pedestrian. So I am personally passionate about building a healthy, engaged, connected community, one where active transportation is not only possible, which to some extent it is here, but it's also safe and inviting, and even the preferred way to get around. And as Emeryville continues to develop, this will become increasingly important. So my focus on B-PAC so far has been on pedestrian needs and safety. I would like, Emeryville, I would like walking through Emeryville to be so safe and so easy and appealing, coupled with effective transit, that people will actually want to move here without a car, and a couple, or a couple will give up their second car and start usually walking and transit more often. I live, I live along the Powell Corridor, so my, I walk through there almost daily and pay attention to that, and this is a high priority area that B-PAC has been addressing now, actually at every meeting. And we're, we're currently working on adding our own recommendations to the SafeTrack recommendations. But now I'm also focusing on age-friendly Emeryville. So when I examine our bike and pedestrian, I do it with a special eye towards age-friendliness. And I think this is really important. Not only is age-friendliness a commitment of Emeryville, but for seniors, as they age, walking, it becomes increasingly important for their well-being. But also, senior pedestrians are actually at the highest risk of any age group for auto collisions and for serious injury or deaths from them. And seniors are naturally cautious. So if we can make Emeryville safe enough for seniors to walk in and to want to walk in, then I think that will benefit, that will benefit all ages, including children. So that's, that's a very important goal for me. And I also serve on the commission. I'm aging, so I can keep connections open between the groups. And I think this coming year, B-PAC is developing a new ten-year pedestrian and bicycle plan. And over the past ten years, there've been quite a few new ideas about urban design and city walkability that we can incorporate into that. So I'm looking forward to returning to B-PAC and making our next ten-year plan as forward-thinking and innovative as possible.
Great, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to keep these short, but any follow-up questions from council members? Although she's been dropped off the line, so we won't be doing that.
I can bring her back if you need me to.
No worries. Do we have any of the other members? No worries. Do we have any of the other member, any of the applicants present?
Beth Ferguson is here.
Perfect. We'll go with her next. Beth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Take about a minute, minute and a half and introduce yourself and tell us why you want to be on the committee.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Pats and the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm an assistant professor at UC Davis in the Department of Design. I'm also a faculty researcher at the Institute of Transportation Studies where I work on future mobility, innovation, sustainable transportation. I moved to Emeryville recently because of Amtrak. I live without a car and the multimodal transit options in Emeryville fascinate me. I'm working right now on an SB 1 grant with BART to look at BART stations in the Bay Area to see how they're connected to last mile challenges and solutions. So I'm passionate about micro-mobility. I have a master's degree from the University of Texas in Austin, where I launched a small design studio to make solar charging stations for electric bikes. I've worked with the city of Austin and Austin Energy on their pilot program called the Electric Drive, which is award-winning and allows people to see the possibilities of using solar energy to charge electric bikes, bike share and electric vehicles. I'm really excited to see what's already happening in Emeryville. Like with the slow streets and extending 40th Street to have a separated bike lane. I think the potential is really exciting and looking forward to learning more.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? No? Okay, let's go ahead and go to the next person, please.
I don't have any more people that I recognize for B-PAC. If anybody is on here waiting and you were an applicant for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or star nine.
Thomas Modak, John Showerman and Jordan Wax. And I apologize, I think I may have pronounced Schurman.
It's Sherman.
I don't see any of them here.
Okay. With that, we'll go to public comment on this item?
There is no comment at this time.
And I see one raised hand.
Beg your pardon? Go ahead, Miguel.
Hello, this is Miguel Guerrero. I wanted to speak on behalf of Celeste Burrows. My time working with her on the B-PAC Committee, I always valued her perspective as a pedestrian in the city and thinks that, and think that she brings great feedback to every meeting. So a reappointment for Celeste is what I'm advocating for. And the points that Beth mentioned earlier, I think are in line with with direction that projects are taking in our city. And I'm interested in seeing what Beth can do on the B-PAC Committee and excited and hope that she's able to be voted on to that committee today.
Thank you. It looks like we have another hand?
There was, but now it's down, so it looked like-
It was the other newly appointed planning commissioner, so-
Right. Let's just check and make sure. Zoe, did you have a comment to make? Going one?
Unmute herself? Okay. Okay, any other public comment on this item?
No, there is none.
Okay. For discussion, I would like to go to Councilmember Medina first.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all the applicants. This committee does extremely detailed, in-depth discussions. It is a lot of commitment from the members on this committee and I appreciate everyone there who served, wants to continue to serve. And we're really lucky to have so many fantastic applicants at this time and you know, we unfortunately have a mismatch between the positions available and the applicants in which we have a business position that's going to have to be held open. And I will be discussing that at a later meeting tonight and I just want to put a pin in that as a potential that could become open later. But at this time, I I'd like to move to appoint Jordan Wax, John Sherman, Celeste Burrows and Beth Ferguson onto the committee. I deeply appreciate the work Thomas Modak has put in over the years on B-PAC and I love working with him and I'd love him to reapply if we have an opening again soon. But I do think it's incumbent on us to build the bench and bring new community members in when we do have that opportunity.
Second to motion.
Okay.
I'd just like to say something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, any other comments before we go to the vote? Member Donahue?
Tom Modak is, has a real estate business in our city. He's a Realtor. Couldn't he be the business rep?
He didn't put it on his application. I don't know. Sheri, can we make that judgment call for him?
I think the cleaner way to go would, after council takes action later on tonight, to potentially go with the recommendation. We'll bring that back on July 7th and we could also have a companion item that would make that appointment.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, next item up is 6.2.2, which is to be on the Budget Advisory Committee.
Okay, Dylan Terrill, let me make sure if he is still on. There he is. Dylan, go ahead when you're ready.
So Dylan, just give us about a minute and a half, a minute, minute and a half of who you are and why you want to be on the Budget Advisory Committee.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pats and council members again. So I I think I touched on my background a little bit earlier in the Planning Commission discussion. Ultimately, I just really like to be involved in the community that I call my home and the one that I've grown to love over the past couple of years. So as a business owner based in Emeryville with a team based in Emeryville, I'd like to use my voice as a platform for all businesses in Emeryville when providing recommendations and feedback to the city's budget. In addition, as a young member of the community, I think I bring a unique perspective while helping to voice the opinions and concerns of younger community members. I would thoroughly work, enjoying on United Front to help shape how Emeryville spans, thereby creating a more prosperous, safe and healthy community. That's, that's all I have.
Excellent. Any follow-up questions from other council people? Member Bouters?
Thank you. Dylan, I was looking forward to this conversation and I appreciated your candor during the Planning Commission interview. I'm the council liaison to this committee and I sit on the Budget Governance Committee with Councilmember Martinez. My, my question for you is just, can you just describe a little bit? We have one position for a business rep, one position for a labor rep, and then we have three resident reps. And so you, you mentioned you applied here on the application for business. You're also a resident. Can you just describe a little bit about what your business is and does? It's not entirely clear from your application. I'd just like to know a little bit about it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So to be honest, I mean, it's not a local business in the sense that we do, we do not provide services to the Emeryville community. However, we do employ members of the community in Emeryville and we have an office here in Emeryville as well. So maybe that clears up a little bit. Our mission essentially is to provide sustainable capital and lending facilities to small businesses and entrepreneurs that are based in East Africa. So you can think about like a microfinance on a slightly larger level. So my job specifically, my title is the Chief Business Officer. So I manage all of our finances, our legal and our business development functions, how we raise capital and how we deploy that capital.
Well, as somebody who used to live in Kenya and Tanzania and has worked over there with small business entrepreneurs, I'm going to be very interested in getting to know you on our Budget Advisory Committee. No more questions, Mr. Pats. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, do we have another candidate on the line?
I don't see one, but if I'm missing someone, please raise your hand.
Okay, we will go to public comment then on this item?
There is no public comment on this item at this time.
Okay, Member Bowder, actually, Member Martinez, Vice Mayor Martinez, I thought I'd start the discussion with you since you serve on this committee.
I actually serve on budget and governance.
Oh, sorry.
But I'm, I'm happy to support all three applicants with Dylan as the, the business representative. And I'll make that motion if-
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments before we take the vote?
I just want to thank all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee. It's a small but fantastic committee. And Sheri, can you just clarify for me? I was reading the resolution on the agenda. It's got one for a business representative for a term ending 2021, and then it says one for a business representative and two for residents. So do we have two business reps and two residents? Is that the actual composition of the committee?
You know, I should have had these resolutions in front of me and I don't, but I can bring Lorraine on to the call and she knows-
I had always thought it was three, maybe it's two, two and one labor rep, but I'd always thought it was three residents, one and one, but maybe I'm wrong. Because it says you have two, you have two positions for business rep and two for residents on this resolution.
Let's see if we can get some help from Lorraine. Lorraine, can you hear us? And did you hear the question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are, on the committee, there's five total and there's two business reps and three residents. And we've had a business representative position that's been vacant since last year, so it's never got filled and that is why that is ending in 2021. And then this round, this year, we have one business rep and two residents that were scheduled to end as of June 30th.
Lorraine, isn't there supposed to be a labor rep? Because Miru just saw- You said there's two business reps and three residents, so then that would get us to six if we add labor. And that's not right.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Yes, city labor rep and two residents, two business reps.
Okay.
I, I'm, so I'm gonna, my takeaway is that there's two business reps, two residents and one labor rep. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, okay. So Councilmember Martinez, you made the motion and Mr. Donahue seconded. I would just ask, because there are two opportunities here for the reps to be business reps, I would just ask that your appointment of Mr. Terrill be for the position that goes all the way through 2022, that we give him the full term.
To your position.
I would accept that amendment.
Great. Okay, City Clerk, do you understand the motion and are you ready to take the vote?
I am ready to take the vote. Yes, thank you. Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to the next one, which is Commission on Aging.
Yes, and I will bring up Yvonne Behrens as soon as I find her name on here. There we go. Yvonne, you're all set if you'd like to unmute.
Hello. So I've been on the Commission on Aging for four years. I was not planning to renew because I was planning, I am planning to. I purchased a home in Virginia. And so I was planning to move back to Virginia, but with the whole COVID situation, several people suggested that I go ahead and put my name in for continuity sake. And since we don't really know when everything's going to be lifted, I thought, well, I may as well put my name in. I've also observed, however, that some of the other people putting their names in seem to potentially be good people. So I don't know whether my continuity is as necessary. I, I think there is a learning curve and I do think that to learn all the components and how it works and everything does take time. And we do have three new members recently on the, on the board, on the commission. And they're learning the ropes. So I don't know. Maybe I could go just as a, I don't know if I could play an active role until that segue can occur. Or whether it's even worth that. But anyway, my interest in the Commission on Aging, I'm very active and it's, it's something that I'm very interested in maintaining. I'm an aging member of Emeryville and want to make sure that the interests of the aging community is always at the forefront of everyone's mind because if we keep situations, easy access for seniors, whether it be through transportation or walking accessibility or rental affordability, we, the seniors can be a very viable part and a great addition to the whole community. So that's basically my interest in being on the commission.
Well, thank you. Any follow-up questions, Member, Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you, Yvonne. I, I want to thank you for your service to the community. I've, I've truly enjoyed serving with you on the committee. But I was wondering, in light of your semi-flexible situation, if you would be willing to attend the meetings as a non-voting member and continue to represent Emeryville at PAPCO?
Oh. Well, I would, sure, that, that's fine. And I would continue representing Emeryville at PAPCO. Well-
While, while you're a resident.
And I guess the other question would be then, during the meetings, would I be on the schedule to report what's happening at PAPCO?
Sheri, Christine, would there be a problem with, with a non-member of the committee reporting back at the Commission on Aging from PAPCO?
As long as it's on the agenda. Just, just make sure it's regularly agendized.
It is. It's agendized every meeting.
But it, it has been because I'm on the commission, maybe.
But we, we, we can continue to have that.
Okay, and then the second question I would have is that being an active member of the commission and always having an opinion that I can share, would I still have those same capabilities as a non-voting member? Public member attending the-
I, I, you know, it, it's up to the chair to grant you time to speak, but we should be having public comment on every item on which the commission is taking action. And Baruk is a very generous chair and I'm sure he wants to hear your point of view and, and especially as we, as, as you mentioned, we have these newer members who could use your guidance. So I, I, I would definitely encourage the chair to allow you to speak. And as you know, Yvonne, we are we don't have a lot of public participation at this committee, so your, your presence in the room will be felt certainly.
Okay, I appreciate that, Diane. Thank you. So on that note, I probably should remove my name for consideration. And we will keep it that my, my, you know, my term has ended as of June 30th and I will just become a, an active public member attending the meetings and a representative for PAPCO.
And, and I have to thank you for your graciousness and I, and I do hope that you commit to still attending the meetings so long as you're able because we really do value your voice.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sheri, do we have any other applicants here to speak?
We do. Next up will be Celeste Burrows.
Okay, so again, just take them, unmute yourself and then take about a minute to tell us why you want to be on the committee and a little bit about yourself, although I think we all know you.
Go ahead, Celeste.
So you know me, I've been on the commission for the past two years. And I am personally very interested in helping to make Emeryville a place where seniors can age well and age in place if they want to. And the Commission on Aging has just started examining the age-friendly domains and started working on that and investigating those themselves. And I think we can make a valuable contribution to support the city's efforts. So that's something that I'm very definitely excited about working on. I'd also like to foster more connections between the Commission on Aging and other advisory committees that are involved with the domains of age-friendly Emeryville. I know Berkeley has done that with its city departments that are involved with age-friendly Berkeley, well, the city departments that also are involved with age-friendly Emeryville and has found that to be very successful. And I think if we do that with our committees that are involved with those domains and establish a more regular and structured connection, I think, I think that'd be very helpful. So, so I'd like to, to, to work on that. And currently, I'm, I, I'm currently now also working in the, in the area of nutrition consulting and healthy aging. And I do want to bring that perspective to our efforts to keep Emeryville's seniors as healthy and independent as possible. So that's another reason I like being on the commission. I think over the next couple, the next couple of years, I think we need to work a little harder to ensure a more stable membership that does not turn over as rapidly as we have been over the last few years. And especially one that we've talked about, making our member, our commission membership more diverse and more representative of the community as a whole. And we even expanded to include one 94608 resident attempting to do that. But I think that's still much more work. And I, I hope we do that during the next year. And also find ways to publicize the commission's work and the valuable information sharing that goes on at our meetings. And to make sure that that, that reaches the rest of the Emeryville seniors in an effective way. So those are some needs I see coming up in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any clarifying questions or other comments from the council before we go to public? Mr. Gina?
Mr. Mayor, before the council starts, I wanted to point out that there is actually a typo on the resolution. There's a discrepancy between the title, the resolution title and the terms. I'll note that the title notes that there's a term starting on July 1, 2019, ending on June 30th, 2023. But the second resolved, I believe, has the correct timeframe of July 1, 2020, ending June 30th, 2024.
That's correct.
So we'll, we'll make that correction when we make a motion?
Thank you.
For you? Okay. All right, so any follow up questions for this particular candidate before we move to the next one? Seeing none, Celeste, thank you. Are there anybody else here, any other candidates here to speak?
Yes, next up is Barrington Lloyd Lovett.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Barrington Lloyd Lovett. I have been a resident of Emeryville just for about a year and a half. But we are quickly discovering that we may put down long-term roots. My family is young, but planning on being in the Bay Area for a long time and finding that we really enjoy Emeryville more and more. And so in thinking about what it would mean to be here a long time, I want to understand what it looks like for us as we're aging. My in-laws live very close and I'm actually trying to convince them to move here. And if we could do that, then we could actually build a larger immediate community for ourselves. A little bit of background from me, I studied Spanish and then Persian literature in undergrad and grad school. That was in Missouri. I moved here to work in a tech company and I still work there. I do information security for this company called Stripe. And I am very passionate about getting cross-functional work and making connections between teams that work on different things but have a common ground. And I feel that being on a commission for aging gets a lot of connections with different areas of Emeryville's work, different areas, different committees and planning commissions, getting a better understanding of what the city is working on for the long term and being able to really work with people and kind of bridge the gap from what the needs for this commission are and what the needs for other groups are and work together. I don't have much else besides that, other than I am excited for the opportunity. And thank you again for, for the chance to speak.
So thank you for that. Any questions from the peanut gallery? No? Okay, let's go to our next person.
Okay, next up is John Suter.
Mr. Suter, okay.
My eyes. There we go, sorry. Go ahead, John.
Now, there we go.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be considered for this committee. I have to admit, I knew nothing about this. I just received an email seeing as how I'm a senior senator member. And I've been always willing to help organizations build. My background has been in service organizations. And recently here, recently, in the last 30 years, for somebody my age, that's recent. In the last 30 years, I've done various things for the city of Emeryville. The first was when I moved onto my boat in Emery Cove Marina. I helped the city look at alternatives to abandoning their marina and helped them consider and implement privatizing. And that's before I left to go on my seven-month cruise all over the Pacific. When I came back, I was back on the board at the Emeryville Marina and, or at the Emery Cove Marina and have done a lot of improvements. The strength I have is I care about people probably more than I should. I've built my, my career on that in being more interested in the, the people under me than about anyone above me. Because I knew that the people, when you have them happy and content and cared for, you become successful. And one of the things I did, I really identified with Planning Commission applicant Guerrero when he said listening was so important. And that is my mantra, you've got to listen. A salesman always opens his mouth. If he would just use the, his ears, he would gain a lot more insight into what to do. And I'm very, I don't have any background in these commissions, but I'm very willing to learn how to help make, well, the senior, the senior citizens enjoyment of living in Emeryville even more than it has been.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the other council members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Suter. Any other applicants here, Sherry?
I don't believe so, but if I've missed someone, please raise your hand at this time.
Okay, we'll go to public comment at this point on this item?
Nothing from me.
And Vice Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, you're on this committee, correct?
I am, I see Celeste Burrows' hand raised. If you wanted for another opportunity to speak.
Celeste, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I have a comment. I know I did write in support of Ken Bukowski's application because I thought he would add value because he's had some experience with Emeryville. But given that he's not here to speak for himself, I, I think, I think having the continuity of keeping Yvonne on the committee for as long as she's willing to stay on the committee as a, as a voting member. She's been our vice chair for the last year, which has been very, very, she's been very, very valuable in that way. And I think it's been very painful how much turnover we've had on the committee. And we're now almost, we would be all, all new members. And that's, that's, that's not ideal. So my preference, if we can do it, if we're electing other new members, would be to keep Yvonne on the committee for as long as she's able to be here. And then look at other candidates when she does have to leave. But I'll leave it up to you. I trust the judgment of council on what's best here.
Thank you for those comments. So Vice Mayor?
So Celeste, I hear you. And that's why I wanted to check in with Celeste, I mean, excuse me, Yvonne, to see if she would be committed to attending the meetings and lending her voice as a non-voting member before I went ahead and made a recommendation. And I just want to remind you that we do still have Baruk and Louis LeVatt, who are longtime members of the committee who are there also to maintain the continuity. It's, you know, I have the same concern with the turnover with the commission. And that is why I am, I actually am erring on the side of bringing in more people who are interested and allowing them to serve the community in this way. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to appoint John Suter and Ken Bukowski as residents to serve on terms commencing immediately and ending June 30th, 2023. And to appoint Barrington Lloyd Lovett and Celeste Burrows as residents to serve on the commission for terms commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending on June 30th, 2024. And so that's the motion. You're muted, Scott.
I second the motion.
Member Medina?
If I can make a comment, these, I understand the thought process behind us, that these bodies are advisory to the council. I am not comfortable having someone advise the council who has been formally censured by the Emeryville City Council for ethical misconduct and also by our state FPTC. So I cannot support the motion as is, and will abstain, though I fully support all the other applicants.
So, Member Bouders?
I will concur with Member Medina and with no disrespect to Member Burrows and to the other fine candidates for the reasons Member Medina stated. Councilmember Martinez, I'm going to be respectfully voting no on your motion.
So given I would be forced to be the third, well, it'd be two no's and an abstention. I think what I'm going to do is offer a substitute motion, making the same motion, leaving out Mr. Bukowski.
I'll second that.
So you have us, so we'll vote on the substitute motion first.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest something? To the comments that were made at the public comment, you could, you could appoint Yvonne for the time being. And if we have a vacancy in two months or six months, we then have a vacancy, we have a new round of applicants. That way we don't have any vacancies. Because if you don't, if we leave a blank, then we're going to have to have this whole thing again next month because this clerk will re-listen.
Okay, so I will take that friendly amendment. And I have a motion and a second on this for the substitute motion. We'll take that vote first. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. And with that, we don't need to revisit the first motion. And that brings us to the, I've lost my place, the Housing Committee? No, Budget Advisory Committee, I believe, is next.
Economic Development.
EDAC, oh, I went too far down.
And our first person is Rob Fong. And Rob, we are ready for you.
Mayor, Pat's, council members, hi. It's been a long time. It's nice to see you all. I have served one term as an EDAC business representative. I'm with East Bay Therapeutics. And, you know, certainly put my hat in again to, to be reappointed. It's really interesting work and especially in light of the fact that you guys don't have a real chamber. I just think that your staff does a great job. And, you know, East Bay wants to make sure that we're still a big part of, you know, what's going on in terms of economic development and all those things in your great city. And so, you know, if you, if you would have me, I'd love to serve again.
Thank you. With counsel indulgence, I'm going to take a pause here. And looking here, we have fewer applicants than we have seats. And I know the names on this list, Member Bouders, should you wish to say something?
I just wanted to ask, I don't know if you're asking the same thing because I think you're trying to expedite this, Mr. Mayor, and I support that. But I actually wanted to ask this, the clerk, are all the people here, do they match up to the categories? Or are we going to have, like, are there a group of people who are all competing for only one category? Because I otherwise support what the mayor's trying to do.
Not sure I can answer that off the top of my head. Let me see if Lorraine's still on. Here she is. Lorraine, can you answer the council member's question?
Hello, okay, so with each category, we have people, let's see. So there's one business representative.
That was you, Rob.
Uh huh. Well, there's technically four people that qualify for that. We have, so technically, there's some people that can qualify for many different things. So like, Rob and Mary Lou also qualify as a small business representative. So, but they're listed in each category that they qualify for. There's one position for a large business rep and we have two people. One for nonprofit, we have just one applicant that qualifies for that. But we do not have any for a resident.
So, follow me here. I think Mr. Fong qualifies as the business rep. Ms. Lara Poff qualifies as the small business person. Ms. LaRouche qualifies as the large business. Does Ms. Gallagher qualify as either a small business or the nonprofit?
Ms. Gallagher qualifies as a large business rep or just the business rep? Because it's the business, it's a representative of a business of any size.
I could redo that math for you, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Alex can qualify as the business rep. Colleen is the large business rep. Rob and Mary Lou is the small business rep. And Samantha is the nonprofit.
I don't see Samantha's name on my list.
Samantha Miller?
Can I ask staff in the future to put a grid together for these things? Because it's really hard to follow. If you guys could just put their names and then what they qualify for for these categories? Because it leaves us guessing each of these.
So with, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint according to the math that Member Medina just did, with the exception of, you said Ms. Miller? Just because I don't have her on my list.
She's on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I have a different agenda then. Then I'm fine with as is. Do we, will you, we'll go to public comment before we take the vote. But do you agree with that, Member Medina? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go to public comment, see if somebody feels that we shouldn't do this. And then we'll have a thorough discussion.
I have no submitted online comments and I don't see any raised hands. I would like to mention that both Samantha Miller and Colleen Gallagher were on the call. Apparently went longer than they were anticipating and I don't see them on here. Oh, there's Samantha, but anyway.
With their indulgence, we'll thank them for their application and let them know we're about to appoint them. I think if I can get one more vote. So with that, we have a motion by myself and a second from Member Medina. Do you need us to review what we're doing?
No, I took notes, thank you.
You're awesome.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. That brings us to the Housing Committee. And again, I see.
Mr. Mayor, I know there's some housing applicants on this call, but in the interest of time, if you would indulge me, there are four vacancies, there are four members. All of them are current or past members of the Housing Committee. I, as the Housing Committee liaison, strongly support and endorse all of them. The Housing Committee has robust, balanced discussions and all of these people are courteous kind and participate in the committee.
Excellent. Let's go to public comment.
There's no public comment at this time.
With that, would you care to make a motion, Member Bouders?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to appoint Cheryl Bolton, Lawrence Cardoza, Michelle Huggins and Vicky Jo Sol to a term on the Housing Committee beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2022.
Ready, second.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina? Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Um, aye.
Okay, next up, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec Committee.
And I do have Gail Donaldson on the line and Jack Gazoni.
Okay, so I see four spaces but five applicants. So we will slow down again. And again, for those who didn't get to speak in the previous ones, thank you for your time. Ms. Donaldson, you are up. Take about a minute and let us know who you are and why you want to be on the committee.
Thank you very much. I've been on the Park and Rec Committee since its inception as the Planning Commission representative. And since I'm leaving the Planning Commission, I'm still interested in the Parks and Rec Committee. I think parks and recreation especially are key to the quality of life in Emeryville. And I think people have realized that more and more over the last few months. I think we are at an interesting point where we're finding new ways to make public space into park space. And I'm excited to be part of that in my professional life. I have for the last 10 years been working with different cities all over the Bay Area and Northern California on parks and recreation planning. So I would like to continue working with the committee. I think it's a really good group and I think parks are really crucial to our city.
Thank you. Any follow up questions? Okay, next applicant, please.
Jack? We're ready for you?
Yes, can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayor Pats.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayor Pats and councilmembers, for your time. I'm a resident of Emeryville for seven years. I've been on Park and Rec for four years. And I'm a very, very strong believer in the quality of public spaces and what they do to enhance a community and build a community. And I feel like my participation in the Park and Rec Committee has helped me try to contribute to what we have in Emeryville. And both trying to expand what parks we have within the limitations of the, of the financial constraints that we have and everything. And then using creativity and innovation to maximize what we do have, find ways of adding little bits more here and there, and to just increase the value of our programs for, and our spaces for the Emeryville community. And I would like the opportunity to be able to continue doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And any questions from, no? Okay, next applicant, please.
Those are all that I have for Parks and Recreation, unless somebody raises their hand to say otherwise.
Okay, let's take public comment on this item?
There is no comment at this time.
Member Donahue, I have it in my mind that you're on this committee. Is that accurate?
Yes.
I'll throw the floor to you.
Okay, the incumbents are excellent.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion and, while I don't like this to seem like it's nepotism, I propose that my brother Brian be one of the new members along with Gail, Jack, and Patricia.
Uh, so you're making a motion that it's Donahue, Donaldson, Grizoni, and Weber?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Okay, Member Medina, you look like you were going to have something to say. Oh, wait, hang on, sorry, Lorraine looks like she wants to talk. Lorraine, did you have something to say? Sherry, do you see that?
I do. I'm allowing her to talk. Go ahead, Lorraine.
I, I just wanted to point out that one position is for a term ending in 2021, and the rest are ending in 2022. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll clarify that, although we didn't get a second. So I think we're going to go to Member Medina.
Um, I would like to make a motion for Anasal, Donaldson, Gazoni, and Weber.
Okay, do we have a second for that nomination?
Which one is getting the one-year term and which ones are getting the two-year terms?
Anasal could be the one-year term, new one.
Perfect.
I'll second Member Medina's motion.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Doni, who your motion did not get a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez? And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. That brings us to the, um, Public Art Committee.
And I have Harley Jensen up first.
Hang on one second, one, two, three, four, five. We have one more than we have.
I think we have five and five, Mr. Mayor.
Didn't we have somebody withdraw?
Rick Tahata Flores withdrew.
And so do we have, um?
We have five applicants.
We need to decide, and they're all up in 2022?
Correct.
Okay, so I-
And then just, Mr. Mayor, out of respect to Harley, because I, I just want to note that we, we interviewed him last time, and we all felt he was very qualified. We just had more qualified applicants than positions. So I would just note that for the record.
Okay, let's take public comment, and then we'll take, uh, Lorraine's, looks like she has a question as well. So is there any public comment on this item?
I don't have any public comment, no.
Okay, and then, Lorraine, did you need?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that, uh, please keep in mind that one of the positions is for a three-year term instead of, and everybody else is a two-year term.
Okay, so I think, and that's the, the three-year term is the immediate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, Member Bouters, I'm going to make the motion just because I sit on this committee, so I apologize for that. So I am moved that we appoint the app, all of the applicants moving Harley into the immediate three-year term.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any discussion or comments? And I went to public comment, did I not? I did. So, all right. Seeing none, please take the vote. And Harley, I see that you're there, ready to speak. Just in time, we're going to say thank you, you're on the committee after the vote.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. I have, I'm going to call the adjournment at 8:02. For those of you watching at home, I think the council's going to take a five-minute stretch break. I will not call a meeting until, um, 8:07. And with that, we stand adjourned at 8:02. Do you need me to read the COVID script again?
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
I don't mind at all. Okay, it is 8:07, and I call to order the successor agency regular meeting. And I want to briefly read, I'd like to state for the record that this meeting and the next meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www.emeryville.org and clicking on the council agendas and videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting by using the Raise Your Hand feature, which is visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the, on the posted agenda as well as on the e-notification and on social media. All right. With that, approval of the final agenda for the successor agency?
So moved.
Second it. Okay, we have a member, a motion from Member Bouters, a second by myself. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. I noticed I skipped the roll call. Can we count that vote as our roll call?
Yes.
Right. Any extra communications on this item? Perfect. Now is the time for public comment. A portion of this meeting, anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your speaker, speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're in the, calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if any comments have been received or if anybody has raised their hand.
There are no comments at this time.
Great. Seeing no comments, I'll move the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. We have no, no action items. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:10 PM. Let me know when you're ready to go, Sherry.
I am ready, thank you.
Okay, it is still 8:10 PM. I call to order the June 16th City Council regular meeting. Do we do not need to take a roll call? We are all still here, if that's okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I move approval.
I'll go ahead and second that. We have a motion and a second for the final agenda.
I'm sorry I didn't catch who seconded.
I did. Member Medina was going to, but I beat her.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. That brings us to special orders of the day. You know, I had planned to do something to mark Juneteenth, but I've canceled special orders because of the COVID-19. I also plan to look at independent music and had hoped to invite a local record label this evening. And I hope one day to do those things. I see we have no announcements on committee vacancies. So we're right down to meetings attended or special announcements. Councilmembers, raise your hands. Member Medina?
Uh, I went to A-Bag last week. Uh, you guys missed out. It was a solid three hours-ish, two and a half hours. We're negotiating, mostly complaining about a small increase in member dues that for a city of our size would be $500. Paul Alther was very concerned about their $1,500. That is why it took three hours. Otherwise, all A-Bag did was say that they could, uh, get more money from the state if they wanted to. And that was what we accomplished in three hours at A-Bag.
Any other, uh, meetings attended or special announcements? All right. I believe I had the mayor's conference last week. It's, it's hard for me to tell time at this point. We did, we too spent three hours, and a big chunk of that was talked about, the recent events, and we got a lot of support and a lot of kinship with our neighboring cities. It was very nice. And then some really productive conversations about moving forward in the communities. And so I appreciated that. And with that, we move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one major announcement for this week that we're very proud is that we reopened the Emeryville Child Development Center, ECDC, on Monday, yesterday. We have 25 kids. We're very excited to be back with that service. The other piece of that announcement is that during the shutdown, we were able to repair the roof. You will recall that you approved a fairly sizable contract to replace the roof. But in addition, the Public Works team worked in partnership with the teachers at ECDC. And there's a fair number of interior renovations, new paint, new carpet. Also, we're able to replace the play surface on the exterior. So it's a much brighter, friendlier facility for the children. We're very happy to have reopened that this week.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, please press nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have no public comments, but if you wouldn't mind, we skipped over ex parte communications.
I am sorry about that. I just saw that. I keep doing that this evening. Ex parte comment, communications on items on the agenda. Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, too. On 11.2, on the Bird Safe Design, I've been working with Noreen Whedon and the folks at the Golden Gate Audubon Society over the history of that item. And on 12.6, I have had meetings with the ownership at Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe, the Doyle Street Cafe, Trader Vixx, Prizefighter Bar, and the Public Market.
Thank you. Anybody else have any ex parte communications? No? Just because we did it out of order, any other public comment come in in that two-minute time, Sherry?
No.
Okay, I'll look for a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
I'm moved.
I'll go ahead and second it. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to item 11, public hearings. We have, it looks like, two this evening. And the first one is on the P-bid.
Mr. Mayor, this is the annual assessment increase for the ETMA, Emeryville Transportation Authority for the Emeryville Round. I believe we have Ms. Shea from the Finance Department here, who can either give you a short presentation or answer questions. We also, I believe, have Ronnie Hatchrop from the ETMA available to answer any questions. The primary item of note is that the proposal is to increase the assessments by 3% this year. So if you have, if you have questions or if you'd like a presentation, just let us know.
I think we'll go right to questions, and then if somebody, if there's an overwhelming need for a presentation, speak now. Any clarifying questions? Or overnight, no? Okay. At that, I have 8:16 PM. I will open the public hearing. Sherry, do we have any comment cards on this?
We do not.
Okay, at 8:17, I will close the public hearing on this. On this, I think it was great, do we have any discussion from council members? If not, I-
Kind of good news that the increase is only 3%, given that we're getting funds to move all of the buses to a new yard, that our costs are still accelerating. So, to me, that's good news.
Yeah, I'd like to, great, any other member comments before I look for a motion for approval? I just want to say thank you to staff, I think, and to the, all those involved, I think we had projected a 5%, and I think keeping us at a 3% really recognizes the moment, and so with that, I will look for a motion for approval.
I move approval.
I will go ahead, that was Member Medina seconded it, great, so we have a motion from Member Donahue, and a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, 11.2, Bird Safe Buildings.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a presentation from our Community Development Department, I believe Planner Diana Kena is on the line to make that presentation?
That's true.
All right. Well, welcome.
I think Sheri is going to show the PowerPoint. Here. So, this item is about Bird Safe Building Standards as expressed in a proposed ordinance amending the planning regulations. Next slide, please.
One moment, I'm trying to get it into show mode, I beg your pardon.
Oh, yeah. Here.
And does that look right on your screen?
It does to me.
Okay.
Yes, it looks good.
Here we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, back in October 18th, the City Council set it as an agenda item. In February of last year, the City Council held a discussion and directed the Planning Commission to look at it. In September of last year, the Planning Commission held a study session, and then in November, the Council held a study session and directed us to prepare an ordinance, which we took to the Planning Commission in April. Next slide, please. So, what we're proposing is, in Chapter 4 of the Planning Regulations on Site Design, a new Article 8, Bird Safe Buildings. This applies to new construction, window replacement, and independent glass structures like breezeways, balconies, greenhouses, things like that. The Bird Safe Glazing is required on any contiguous glass that's 12 square feet with no mullions or edges, and on 90% of the facade of a building or of the glass in one of those independent structures, and also on glass near plants or water features. The treatment can be external screens like insect screens, glass covered with a 2x4 pattern, that is lines, dots, or whatever, that are two inches apart horizontally or four inches apart horizontally, can be fritz on the glass, or nets, or cores, or groove glass block, or an approved alternative. There can also be an alternative compliance plan by a qualified biologist for methods that require analysis of the site and the building to see if they're going to work or if they're going to reflect vegetation, like layering and recessing of glass, angled or faceted glass, movers or grates, overhangs or awnings, clear glass block, grills, photovoltaic cells in the windows, or placement of plants. And there's also a site design section prohibiting mirrors near landscaping and requiring air conditioning vents to meet that 2x4 rule. Next slide, please. Also, in Chapter Design is an amendment to Article 7, that's a typo, Article 7, Other Site Development Regulations. The article already prohibits uplighting, so this would limit lights that highlight architectural features or art to 100 watt bulb or the equivalent, limit security lighting to eight feet above the ground, and ban spotlights, searchlights, lasers, beams, floodlights, and mercury vapor lights, those are the yellow ones. Next slide, please. To amend the planning regulations, the council needs to make five findings. The first is that it's consistent with general plan goals, it helps to implement two goals, preservation and protection of natural resources, because it protects birds, and protection of public health, because the birds control insects and rodents. Second finding is that it's necessary for public health, safety, and welfare, or benefits the public. It's necessary for public health, safety, and welfare, because it's needed to protect birds from collisions of birds, promote human health, and it benefits the public, because they, birds provide beauty and songs and pollinate plants and spread seeds. Third finding is that the amendment has been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and staff recommends the common sense exemption, it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility the amendment may have a significant effect on the environment. The fifth finding is, if you have a change to the zoning map, the property is suitable and not detrimental to the surroundings, but there's no change to the zoning map proposed. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission received a letter from the Golden Gate Audubon Society that supports the proposed amendment to the planning regulations, and makes a few points that weren't covered in the staff reports, birds connect residents and visitors with nature. Over 185 species of birds are documented in Emeryville, and New York City adopted a Bird Safe Building Ordinance at the end of 2019 after our study sessions. Next slide, please. So, staff's recommendation is that the council introduce the ordinance after a motion to read by title only, and take public testimony regarding the ordinance, and adopt the first reading of the ordinance. So, that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, clarifying questions? Okay, with that, I will say it is 8:23, and I call the public hearing to order, or open, sorry.
Mayor Pats, I do have an online form submitted from Noreen Whedon, but I also see that she is on the call, so, Noreen, raise your hand if you would like to do your comment live, otherwise, I'll read what you submitted. Okay, not raising her hand, so I'm going to go ahead and go. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and Diana. My name is Noreen Whedon, and I am with the Golden Gate Audubon. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the Bird Safe Building Standards for Emeryville. During the current public health emergency, many people are stressed, and they are seeking and appreciating nature around us. With less noise, people are enjoying hearing birds sing. People are looking out their windows or into their backyards, watching birds feed, and maybe even observing an active nest. Birds provide ecological benefits for people, and they also connect us with the natural world. Resident and migratory birds face many threats today, from climate change to loss of habitat to development. U.S. Fish and Wildlife estimates, an average of 1 million birds per day die from building collisions. The bird building collision issue has been well documented in scientific studies, including locally at the California Academy of Sciences in Golden Gate Park. This Bird Safe Building Ordinance before you is a significant step to help birds survive. We appreciate the work that Diana Kena and other planning staff and the Planning Commission did in researching the issue and evaluating what other cities have done to prepare and document this ordinance for Emeryville. The Bird Safe Building Standards Ordinance is beneficial for birds in our local environment. In approving this ordinance, Emeryville can join the forefront of cities protecting their bird populations into the future. Golden Gate Audubon supports this ordinance, and we encourage its approval. Thank you, Noreen Whedon.
Great, thank you for that, any other public comments?
Let's see, no hands.
Okay.
No, there's not, thank you.
Okay, we'll go in for discussion and looking for a motion, and if I remember correctly, Member Bowders brought this to us, so I will go to him first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff, I want to thank Diana Kena, and I want to thank Noreen, and the council in particular, for putting this on the agenda two years ago. I am a nature lover, as I think probably all of us are, but I want to just echo the sentiments Noreen raised about the importance of birds in our community, and I've always been troubled, as a planning commissioner, I was always troubled kind of with the development of the Emeryville Peninsula, not on anyone here today, but we have kind of this hidden jewel tucked next to the I-80 freeway in the Emeryville Crescent, which is a known bird habitat and sanctuary, and many migratory birds come here, and then right across from where they are, we have all these high-rise towers, and we have large, you know, electric lit signs, and I've just really been troubled for a long time about the conflict between human development and natural resources, and so when we talk about being a sustainable community, we do a lot of really good things on greenhouse gas reduction, we do a lot of really great things on multimodal and active transportation work and sustainable building design, but I think one of those elements is really thinking about how our ecological resources, even in a small city, we're kind of the stewards of a bird sanctuary. We don't talk about it very often, but it's here next to our community, and I think we have to take actions to protect that for everybody and for the future of the planet, because birds do pollinate, and they do pollinate things that we use to eat and sustain ourselves, so I'm just really grateful for this, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, and with that, I'll just make the first motion for now to read by title only.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that, but I want to open it up for discussion before we do the title-only reading. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to read by title only.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
You're on mute, Scott.
Oh.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, Mr. Kena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the planning regulations in Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code regarding Bird Safe Building Standards with a sequoia status of exempt pursuant to State Secret Guide line, Section 15061 Sub B3.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to take mayor's privilege and second that, I'm really excited by this.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
You know, I want to thank Member Bowders before I say aye. That brings us to 12.1, Resolution, the City Council Appointing William Zanoni, I hope I got that right, as our new interim finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Sadly, tonight, we are saying farewell to our finance director, Susan Shea, who has accepted Siren Song of the City of San Leandro. We thank her for her four years of service since 2016 to the City of Emeryville. And with her departure, we needed to find an interim replacement, and as you are recently familiar with, under the CalPERS rules, we need the City Council to confirm that appointment, because the interim finance director is a CalPERS, what's known as a retired and new attendant. So, what's before you tonight is a, two pieces, two items of action. One is appointment as the interim finance director under the CalPERS rules, and then secondarily, a unique element of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Section 2-1.304, provides that the City Council confirms the city manager's appointment of the city treasurer. The council last took action to do that in June of 2016, when it appointed Ms. Shea as the city's treasurer, so what I am recommending to you tonight is to take action to adopt the resolution appointing William Zanoni as the city's interim finance director and treasurer. Mr. Zanoni has over 40 years of experience in municipal finance and has served a number of municipalities, including following retirement as an interim finance director in Napa and Venetia. He also worked with Civic Core recently, and is on the phone if you would like to hear from Mr. Zanoni or ask him any questions. So, with that, I will wrap it up with one addition, which is the next two items on your agenda, 12.2 and 12.3, are on your action calendar, because if you approve this appointment, we need to add Mr. Zanoni's name to those two resolutions, so I will walk you through that when we get there. So, any questions?
Okay, any questions, I'm just going to have Mr. Zanoni introduce himself and say hi.
Good evening, I'm Bill Zanoni, I'm glad to meet you remotely. Hopefully, I'll get to meet you in person one day soon. I'm excited for this opportunity, I've spent a fair amount of time in Emeryville, one of my daughters actually went to school in Emeryville and lived in Emeryville for several years, so I'm familiar with the city, and I'm excited to work with Christine and with the city staff, so, thank you.
Well, welcome, well, hopefully, welcome aboard.
Right.
And we're excited to have you, and I will open it up to other council members. They're all blinking at me, so with that, I'll go to public comment.
There's no public comment at this time.
And look for a motion to approve.
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, Sheri, did you get both of those? I looked away.
I got Medina and Donahue.
Perfect, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, so I now can officially welcome you aboard and say, you're going to take up from some wonderful work done by Susan, and I will second what you said, working with the current city manager makes your job significantly easier, working with the city council, not so much, but welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And now, I think we give you power in the next two votes, brings us to 12.2.
So, Sheri, is Susan on the line for this?
Let me allow her to talk.
This is the investment policy, and we have a few changes, Mr. Mayor, which I think Ms. Shea can walk you through.
Great.
To the evening me and council members, we make a minor change to the investment policy by adding information related to credit risk. Credit risk is the risk that a security or a portfolio will lose some or all of its value due to a real or perceived change in the ability of the issuer to repay his debt. Credit risk will be mitigated by limiting investments to the types of securities authorized by this policy, using pre-qualified financial institutions and diversifying the investment portfolio. I want to emphasize that the investment policy continues to focus on three main objectives, including safety of principal, liquidity, and the rate of return. This will ensure that the city has adequate cash flow while investing in safe investments and earning a reasonable return. The investment policy was revealed by the Budget Advisory Committee in May. This concludes my short presentation, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
And, Mr. Mayor, again, with regard to the resolution, we would recommend that you insert William Zanoni's name in the appropriate place.
Okay, I will make sure we do that when you have-
You don't want us to pass one with a blank in it?
Um, I'm sure Mr. Kena would stop us. Okay, just jump right over the dais. The public comment on this item, I'm sure there's lots.
Actually, there's none.
Okay, so, just to make sure that we put in Mr. Zanoni's name, I will make the motion with that change, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second from the vice mayor, vote, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay, that brings us to 12.3, which is going to be, I think, more of the same, right?
And this has to do with the local agency investment fund, and Ms. Shea can tell you the import of this item, Susan?
Yes, LEAF requires that the city adopt a resolution to authorize designated officers to deposit and withdraw funds from the local agency investment fund. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the resolution, authorizing the city manager, Bill, and the senior accountant as the designated officers to interact with LEAF representatives.
So, again, Mr. Mayor, the motion would direct that we include Mr. Zanoni's name in that resolution.
Any questions from council members? Any public comment on this item?
There is none.
I will make a motion adding Mr. Zanoni's name, any discussion, second, I've got a second from Member Medina, seeing no discussion, roll call, Susan, hold the line while you're here, please.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. So, Susan, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, appreciate all the work you have done for the city, you have made our budgets understandable, meaningful, and I don't know, since it's our responsibility to make sure- I don't know, since it's our responsibility to make sure their balance, but I thank you for the hard work and the clarity. And you're going to a good place in San Leandro. They have a great city manager. And I want to say, correct me if I'm wrong, it's Mayor Cutter there?
Yes.
You know, you're going to step into some things that are going on there as all cities, but I think it's a nice step up and a nice city. So good luck to you.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you very much for being in Emeryville.
Good luck, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. It has been a great pleasure working with the city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I acknowledge we're a small city. I love to see people move up and take on bigger challenges. So thank you. Okay, that brings us to 12.4, the staff report on the B-PAC.
So Mr. Mayor, Nancy Humphrey making a presentation of this item. She can walk you through the purpose of why it's before you and the structure of it and what you can expect to see in the future. So I believe Nancy's on the line. Yes?
I am.
There we go.
Okay. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see your faces. So what, Sherry, can you, do you want to share the document?
Sure.
So what, what happened, what has happened in B-PAC is, B-PAC is a very active and very thoughtful committee. And they have taken a lot of actions, made a lot of motions. And since they no longer report to the Transportation Committee, we needed an avenue to take those motions to a body yourself, in this case. So what we have started to do is we're going to be coming quarterly with a list of the motions that have been made. In this case, we start, we're starting in the beginning of 2020 by B-PAC for council to then determine if, you know, there's any action you want to take or questions you want or direction to staff. So I can go through this document and answer questions, or if you'd like, I could come through and tell you proactively what is happening with each of these motions. What do you prefer?
Does anybody have any clarity? I'm sorry, it's hard for me when they're in, to see all the council members from scrolling through. Any questions? Any preferences? I think we all pretty much followed this. Am I correct in that? Any questions? I'm seeing nobody. Scott, I don't see you, but I think we are good. So, Member Medina, I'll come to you. Any other, since there's no clarifying questions after public comment, I'll come back to you. So, public comment on this item, Sherry?
There is none.
Okay, Member Medina.
I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward. This is a continuation of a discussion of B-PAC. We've spent a lot of hours discussing our transportation issues and wanted to make sure they have an efficacious committee that was communicating to us mostly what we needed. And as you can see, most of these are for the bike plan or for future projects. We've incorporated a lot of their feedback on the Ford East Street project and they're very proud of that work. One item that I would like to make a motion on, it's the very last one, which actually did come up earlier tonight, was city council consider B-PAC committee composition be changed to seven community members and two business or community members. There's a discussion at B-PAC about if the council would give some preference to business member if one was available and they just trust immediately without making the formal motion. I think that flexibility would be helpful, the committee having a full and robust membership. Because sometimes, as you can see, who applies doesn't entirely fit or they don't check the business box. So I would like to move that the council update the B-PAC composition to be seven community members and two business or community members as they request.
Second, do I have a second out there?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Great, we have a motion and a second, Sherry?
Just to clarify, can we actually do that? Is that an actionable item?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, if I, thank you, council member. So, Mayor, this is actually agendized as a report to the council and not agendized as an action item for the council. And also in the past, when the council has amended the composition and qualification of your various advisory committees, you've taken that as a action item and adopted a resolution. So what I would recommend is that if the council would like to consider taking up the B-PAC's recommendation regarding the composition of its committee, that it give direction to staff to come back at the next future meeting with a resolution toward that end.
I amend my motion to give direction to staff to come back with a resolution to that end of the future meeting.
Okay, I think we're all good with that, seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, may I add, may I add something to that?
Please.
It's, and it's to, it's to Councilmember Medina, but also to the city attorney kind of first. So as Nancy kind of outlined, the committee, this B-PAC committee used to report to the Transportation Committee and they don't. Now they report directly to council. I think all of us support that. But we have a Public Works Committee and we have a Transportation Committee and they meet jointly. Is there any reason why, when we bring this back, we can't just consolidate the Public Works and Transportation Committees? Why don't we just have a single ordinance for Public Works and Transportation? Why do we have separate committees and separate governing documents for that?
I believe it's, it's sort of the, the history of you, of the, the evolution of how these committees have, have changed. I think that's, that's sort of the short answer, is that over time, the order structure has changed.
So, city attorney, if I may, why don't you do some time, look into that and bring it in on the agendized item?
Sure.
And then we can have a discussion about it then.
Okay.
So is the motion, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, then, there's a motion on the floor to direct staff to bring back legislation to revise the composition of the B-PAC?
And to look at the possible, if that's accepted as a friendly amendment, Member Medina, to look at the composition, whether we need two separate committees that meet jointly or if we can merge them into one?
That, that would probably be a, Mr. Mayor, just a separate item, since the item that's on your agenda tonight has to do with B-PAC.
Okay.
I would recommend that we treat them as a separate item.
Great, so that's fine. Do we want to address that now or do you prove that all to the future agenda item?
I'll just wait, Mr. Mayor, I'll wait.
Okay, perfect. Do we need to vote on that motion in second or can we pull the motion and just give staff direction?
I'm happy to pull the motion.
Is that okay with everybody? And we have given staff.
You understand the direction.
Perfect.
Cool.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Where are we? That was 12, we're on 12.5, third-party platform commission fees and limits.
Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation tonight from Chad Smalley. He's done quite a lot of research, as you can tell from the report that's before you. So this has been agendized for your discussion. I believe Vice Mayor Martinez had requested this item. I see Mr. Smalley's on the line to make his presentation.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Chad Smalley, Economic Development Housing Manager. Waiting for, Sherry, if you could pull up the, we'll go over third-party delivery platform fee limits. Next slide, please. So, way of background briefly, as we all know, COVID-19 health orders prohibit dine-in service. And so since the middle of March, businesses, restaurants have been restricted to only takeout and delivery service. A survey by the Golden Gate Restaurant Association, which is a San Francisco-based restaurant industry association, found in a poll that 73% of the restaurants that they surveyed did stay open with only in takeout delivery, but that 87% of those polled said they were unable to survive on those channels alone. So with this backdrop, third-party delivery platforms, which are the app-based format of ordering delivery, surged as a result of this, as you might expect. And so their business nearly doubled on a year-over-year basis when compared with April of 2019. Their business was increasing anyway, but this pushed a lot of folks into these apps. In the San Francisco Bay area, that there's really, there's many companies that do this service, but really four of them dominate the market and have 99% of the sales. And it's, which companies are most dominant depends on where you are geographically. In the San Francisco Bay area, DoorDash is leading. DoorDash has 64% of the market, followed then by Grubhub and Uber Eats, which each have around 15%. Then Postmates gets 6%. Next slide, please. So with these companies all offering similar services, they, their commission fees vary, but they're in the same market, competing for the same business, and they're doing pretty much the exact same thing. But at this point, we're finding that are often 30% or more of the order prices, the commission fees that they're charging. And this is difficult for the restaurants to cope with because their margins are so slim to begin with. As I mentioned, increased reliance on these platforms during the pandemic has increased the pressure to address commission fees. This was a discussion that was already happening in some quarters of the restaurant industry. But being forced to go to takeout and delivery only, while so much business was shifting to these platforms, just really ratcheted up the pressure on this. And so as a result, a number of cities have adopted limits. San Francisco, Seattle, New York City, Jersey City, and Los Angeles have all done so. There are others as well, in addition to these, but these are the, these are the cities we took a look at in analyzing how to approach this matter. And then, as we mentioned on May 19th, the City Council requested that we perform an analysis of these policies. Next slide, please. So there's, these four businesses are duking it out. They're all providing the same service. They're actually not really making that much money. Grubhub has, is profitable. It's a publicly traded company. It's got about a million dollars in profit reported in its last quarter, but that's on over a billion dollars in sales. And the other companies, which are not publicly traded, are widely known to also not be profitable. And because they're offering something very similar to each other, the industry is going through consolidation. And that's been in the news lately with Grubhub, Uber Eats merger that fell apart and now is actually being acquired or merged with a company, a European company. So there's been a lot of, and there continues, we can expect this consolidation to continue. When the pandemic, you know, obviously created this pressure to lower commission fees. And so in the face of the pandemic, a number of the companies took some measures. DoorDash offered no commissions for a month for new restaurants. But then after that 30-day period, they would go to a 30% commission for delivery and 6% for takeout. Grubhub offered a deferral of commissions till June 30th. And then their normal commissions would kick in, depending on which advertising package the business selects. But that also required a one-year commitment to staying with the company. And so these promotions have been criticized because they're subject to change, they're voluntary, you can't really rely on them. They pretty much apply mostly to new sign-ups to the, to these services. And so they haven't provided the relief sufficient to quell the concerns. Next slide, please. So the cities have taken up regulatory issues during the pandemic and they've done it in a number of ways. San Francisco threw an order, an emergency order, imposed a limit of 15%. It, that does not apply to any formula stores, which in San Francisco's ordinance is basically anyone with more than 11 locations, chain stores, in other words. And this order is in effect until dine-in service is allowed. This order is enforced strictly through right-to-private action. So the, an affected business can bring an action in civil court against Grubhub if they're charging them more than 15% commission fees. This was advocated for the Golden Gate Restaurant Association and I spoke to them. They report that it's been well-received by restaurants in general. And, but, and they have, nor city, San Francisco staff, nor GGRA has related any cases where violation is known to have occurred. And so the impact of that is unknown at this point. I think it's a little early to tell. It is notable that as a result of this, Uber Eats claims that, well, Uber Eats discontinued service to Treasure Island residents. And they cited this, this order as the reason for it. It is notable, though, that they had only recently added Treasure Island to their service area. The effect was that Treasure Island restaurants, or I'm sorry, residents only had two or three weeks of service from Uber Eats. But next slide, please. In Seattle, it was also done by an order, limited 15%. And this one applies until unrestricted dine-in service is allowed or the emergency declaration is rescinded. It specifically calls out that any reduction of driver compensation in order to deal with these limits is prohibited. And this one is enforced by the city. So as it, the city actually has administrative, a penalty that they can assess of up to $500 or, and/or up to 180 days of imprisonment for violations of this. Likewise, the Seattle Restaurant Association reports it was well-received, but it had no reports of any conflict or cases coming out of this order. Next slide, please. In Los Angeles, they took a different approach and they're looking at this from, as an ordinance, as opposed to an order, an emergency order. In Los Angeles, they are looking to limit, or they just recently passed this, a limit of 15% on delivery and 5% on takeout orders, which will apply until 90 days after dine-in service is allowed. This one also provides that all tips have to be, have to go to the drivers. And it has certain pricing disclosure rules that apply to, to the customers. So if the business is, if the platform is advertising a price, they have to, they have to honor that price to the customer. And if, and it has to be the price that's set by the restaurant. So in other words, if, if the restaurant hasn't set a price on the platform that sells, then the ordinance provides that they have to use the price on the restaurant's main actual menu in store. This one's enforced by right-of-private action only, similar to the San Francisco ordinance. And the restaurant's support on this is reflected in the public record was split, but that is in part due to the fact that Postmates, which has a larger market share in Los Angeles than they do in, in San Francisco Bay area, facilitated some opposition. And so they had rounded up around 20 restaurants that expressed, that signed onto a letter opposing the ordinance. This ordinance just took effect on, on June 4th. Next slide, please. In New York City, they limit now to 15, and they do this through an ordinance, 15% for delivery and 5% for all other fees. So what's interesting about this one is that effectively you can have a maximum 20% cap. Because if you, because this ordinance is pretty comprehensive in terms of fees. It talks about all, whether it's marketing or surcharges or anything like that, that these, these fees are all encompassed with by this cap. So in New York City, you can pay a maximum of 20% if you, if you do, if a business maxed out the delivery fee. And this is effective during all declared emergencies and 90 days after those declared emergencies cease. So this isn't specific to COVID-19. And this one is enforced by a civil penalty up to $1,000 per violation. Grubhub in the correspondence during this ordinance, which was, at one earlier iteration, actually had a lower cap than what they landed on, suggested that the result of this would be a reduction in driver compensation. And, and, and in most cases where Grubhub has opined publicly on these ordinances, they've questioned the overall legality of them. Next slide, please. In Jersey City, a unique case where they, they took the first reading on an ordinance and then it was voted on, it was unanimously approved at first reading. And as a result of that, the mayor went ahead and instituted an order, an order which made the ordinance come effective immediately instead of waiting the typical time period after the second read. This one limits to 10% for both delivery and takeout, and it's effective during all declared emergencies. It protects driver compensation and it's enforced by the city, up to $2,000 fine under 90 days. And after this, this order was put in place, Uber Eats imposed a $3 surcharge for Jersey City customers and noting that these customers could go to adjacent cities, because Jersey City is smaller than some of these large metropolitan areas we've been talking about. And that they, these folks could order from restaurants outside of Jersey City if they wanted to, to avoid the surcharge. And they did this for the stated reason of this order. The result is that, as of today, when I checked, Jersey City- The result is that as of today, when I checked, Jersey City had a second reading of this ordinance and tabled the item without any discussion. And so the ordinance itself is not is in effect, but the order is. And so they they continue to to have these limits. Next slide, please. So this culminates in in view of the landscape here, there's it raises some issues to consider. One is that the ordinances and orders are all relatively new. So there's not a tremendous amount of data about how what the experience is to the on the restaurant side. And there's a lot of confounding variables because we're in a really unprecedented time with regard regard to public health orders that affect their business. So but in general, restaurants generally support these fee limits. The restaurants I've talked to, not universally, but the restaurants I've talked to that are are interested in this and think that it's something good, and and that it may be intuitive. But this this kind of policy may raise some risks that are worth at least considering, thinking about. One is that we have few, the city of Emeryville has few restaurants relative to neighboring cities because we're small over overall. We're just a small jurisdiction. And so the risk for a platform to withdraw entirely from the city of Emeryville is something to be considered. Because the the risk to the platforms of doing so is much less to do that in Emeryville than it is to do it in San Francisco where they be a very high profile action that would affect a lot of their business. Whereas in Emeryville, they could effectively make an example of a community almost similar to the way Treasure Island was was handled. The other reason to think about this is that our restaurant customer basis is small. So it would be straightforward for them to institute a surcharge on our customers as a punitive measure. Because those customers could it's in similar to the Jersey City case, they could order from adjacent communities. The ways to mitigate that, in my view, are to look closely at the actual amount of the limit, whether it be five, ten, fifteen, twenty percent, and its applicability in terms of how long it's going to be in place for. Those two dimensions, I think, could help quell some of the the opposition from the industry to this. And as to as to what it applies to. The other thing to consider is the enforcement mechanism. As I've mentioned in these ordinances, they use two methods. One's a right to private action where the city stays out of it, and it just creates this ability for a restaurant to go to court versus administrative penalty, which requires the city to to build the infrastructure and staff to do so. And and necessarily the costs associated with that kind of regime. Next slide, please. So that that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to field any questions you may have. And yeah, and that's it.
I have a question. Have you heard anything from San Francisco about how it's going there?
Yeah, I reached out to San Francisco staff and the the Restaurant Association. Both conversations were really light on actual concrete experience with this. I mean, it 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 really came down to, I mean, I had I had a lovely conversation with San Francisco staff about this. But it really came down to, yeah, the restaurants like it. We haven't heard anything. We haven't seen any cases come through there. It's there's some feeling on the part of San Francisco staff that the industry, because it's not profitable, it's sort of a business model problem that doesn't work for the third party delivery services. And so we spent some time talking about that, but nothing concrete in terms of, you know, this is what we're this is what we're seeing on the ground. And, you know, lawsuits haven't been filed and claims haven't been put in. It's just, yes, the cities appreciate that we or the 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 restaurants appreciate that we did this. So that's really been it. It's very light on data at this point.
Yeah. Any other clarifying questions, member Martinez?
Chad, has there been any buzz from other East Bay cities regarding similar measures?
Yes, somewhat. It's my understanding the city of Oakland explored this in a preliminary way and elected not to go this route. From this is from talking from the staff. I understand a council member in Berkeley may have been been looking at this as well. But I don't know the outcome or whether they're moving forward.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, Chad, thank you for that. Sherry, public comment on this item?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, this is just a report out. So we'll go into a brief discussion. Thoughts? Anybody?
Seems a little little risky, given that Oakland has done nothing, Berkeley has done nothing. If we start out first, we could be slapped down pretty fast. I don't know.
Member Martinez?
I agree, Scott. I first I want to thank Chad for putting together this very robust report. I really appreciate being able to look at what these other cities who are all much bigger than Emeryville have done. And I appreciate the spirit of the ordinances they passed, except for instituting jail time possibly for people who were in violation. I don't know if I would go that far. But Scott, I do agree that the unintended consequences that Chad highlighted would make this difficult for a city of our size to step out first on something like this. However, I just think that there's so much to consider in the research that Chad did, that I would like to refer this report to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. If my colleagues are interested in doing that as an item that they could keep an eye on. And, you know, if if folks are following the news with the reopening of business as usual in the United States, there are a lot of epidemiologists who are expecting another wave of COVID nineteen that could be as bad or worse than what we experienced this time around. So this is not an issue that's going to go away. And some sort of process is going to move forward to accelerate what will be a profitable or manageable way of getting food delivery done. Someone is going to take the lead in this. These companies are going to consolidate. They're all going to eat each other, and we're going to be left with a couple who are standing and we're going to be able, we're going to need to have the tools to protect our small restaurants from whatever behemoth controls delivery services. So I don't think we need to take action now. I would like to refer this to economic development. And I I I I thank Chad for doing outreach to our local restaurants. And I hope that as this discussion moves forward, that they are part of the conversation and and let us know their specific needs in the delivery arena and how the city can help them be poised for success with a takeout and delivery model.
Great, thank you. Hey, any other member bowders?
I I just want to agree with Councilmember Martinez and add that through the course of discussions on other agenda items we've had about how to support small businesses and the repayment plan, and how do we do outdoor dining? I've talked to a lot of them, and a lot of them have complained about this very issue and the percentage that DoorDash and other service providers are are taking. And they talk about how the the mod however it works, and I'm not I'm not the economist for this, to be honest with you, but how the model makes them dependent on that customer base. And then they really can't ever get off of it. And it's but the in the meantime, they're being like, all the money is being siphoned away from them in a way from the way this is is operating. So it is kind of an interesting thing, and I agree like it has the Scott like it has to be. It has to be regional if we're going to do it. So but but I think Councilmember Martinez's you know, suggestion about keeping an eye on it and sending it to EDAC to watch is important because I actually think you can't just be scared by, oh, we just won't come and serve here. Because I actually think that the model actually could kill a lot of restaurants itself. So it's kind of like, how do you balance it? And I think that, you know, I've had conversations with representatives from neighboring cities who do want to address this issue but agree that we need to do it collectively. So I think keeping it on the table is important.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Thank you. That brings us to twelve point six, the permitting for outdoor seating. And
Mr. Bryant has a presentation on that, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I do. Sherry, can you bring up the slides, please? Mayor Pats and members of the city council, you have before you two ordinances, an urgency ordinance and an identical regular ordinance to expedite the permitting of outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next slide, please. So by way of background, as you know, under the current county shelter in place order, restaurants are not allowed to have dine-in service, but they are limited to takeout and delivery service only. In the press release just last Friday, June twelfth, the County Public Health Department stated that as of June nineteenth, twenty twenty, which is this coming Friday, the health officer orders will relax restrictions by reopening, among other things, outdoor restaurant dining. That order has not been published yet, as far as I can tell. I've checked the county website on a daily basis, including just about an hour ago. And I don't see the new order yet, but they say that it will be published and effective as of this Friday. In anticipation of this, at your May nineteenth meeting, the council directed us to develop a streamlined approval process and to reduce or eliminate the fees for outdoor dining for consideration at a future council meeting. And this item response responds to that request. Next slide, please. So the outdoor dining approval process depends on whether the proposed outdoor dining is on private property or in the public right of way. If it's on private property, then a temporary use permit is required. If it's in the public right of way, if it's on the sidewalk, a sidewalk cafe permit would be required. And that also includes other city-owned pedestrian areas such as the Greenway. If it's in the street, then that is called a parklet. It's also a kind of a sidewalk cafe permit, but it has different permitting requirements and process. So the proposed ordinances address waivers and modifications to each of these three processes to expedite their approval. Next slide, please. And I'll now go through those three different approval processes and the proposed waivers and modifications. So temporary use permits, this is for private property. This is a fairly straightforward process. It's a staff level approval in consultation with all the various affected city departments, which typically includes planning, building, public works, fire, police, sometimes the city attorney and any other departments as appropriate. The application has to include a site plan, a description of the operations, and a schedule. And the maximum duration for a one-time event, which is what outdoor dining would be considered, is sixty days. The only modification that we're proposing change that duration to the duration of this ordinance, which we are proposing to be one year. Next slide, please. For sidewalk cafes, the current process is that staff level, again, it's a staff level approval in consultation with all affected departments. The application requires a detailed site plan, furniture specifications, photographs of the sidewalk so that it can be returned to its former condition when the cafe sidewalk cafe is removed, proof of insurance, and a signed indemnification statement. There are a number of standards for sidewalk cafes. This includes that they have to be in association with an adjacent ground level restaurant, that the furnishings need to be removed at the end of each day. No amplified music or smoking is permitted in the sidewalk cafe area, and they must maintain at least four feet of clear public sidewalk around the sidewalk cafe that comply with the ADA requirements. Alcohol is permitted to be served in a sidewalk cafe as long as there's a physical barrier around the sidewalk cafe and a full food service is provided. Our ordinance explicitly prohibits bars from having sidewalk cafes. And the sidewalk cafe permit is valid for one year. It expires on December thirty first of each year, but it and it automatically renews with no fee for the next year. So if the applicant in the city don't do anything, the sidewalk cafe permit automatically renews. If there's any problem with the sidewalk cafe, the city can always opt to not renew the permit, but that has never happened. Next slide, please. So the proposed waivers for the sidewalk cafe permits would be, first of all, to modify the clear sidewalk from four feet to six feet in order to maintain social distancing. I would note that this is the only instance where the modification that we're proposing is actually more stringent than the current regulations. But again, this is for social distancing. We would propose to waive the requirement that the furniture be removed at the end of each day as long as it's adequately secured. So it doesn't walk away during the night. We would waive the restriction on bars being able to have sidewalk cafes as long as they are full meals are served. And this conforms to the state guidance for outdoor dining, which also requires bars to serve meals with alcohol. Now, the meals could be from their own kitchen, or if they don't have one, they could partner with another vendor to provide the meals. We would also make it explicit that no separate encroachment permit is required for a sidewalk cafe. Next slide, please. Parklets, as I said, are a type of a sidewalk cafe, so the application process and the standards are the same. However, they require a recommendation from the Transportation Committee and then approval by the city council before the staff issues the sidewalk cafe permit. And any council requirements that are put on their approval of this of the parklet become conditions of approval of the sidewalk cafe permit for the parklet. Another distinction is that in our ordinance, parklets are for the use of the general public. They may not be for the exclusive use of a restaurant, even if the restaurant built it, which is generally going to be the case. They also may not have table service, and they may not have alcohol service. Next slide, please. So our proposed revisions are waivers and modifications to the parklet provisions are that we would waive the requirement for Transportation Committee review and City Council approval. We would waive the restrictions on exclusive use by restaurants or that parklets may not be for the exclusive use of restaurants. We would allow that. We would allow table service, and we would allow alcohol service in a parklet. We would also allow bars to have parklets with full meal service similar to for sidewalk cafes. There might be modifications necessary for disabled access for a parklet because they are in the street, and so there's the six inch curb to step down into the parklet. If you don't build it as a separate platform, there's also a possible slope issue because roads have a crown in the middle where they're higher, and then they slope down to the sides. And that slope is sometimes more than the allowed two percent cross slope. There are existing procedures for waiving or modifying disabled access provisions. And we would rely on those existing procedures. There's no reason to include that in this ordinance. Finally, we would also make it explicit that no separate encroachment permit is required for a parklet. Next slide, please. So there are some general provisions that would apply to all of these. All outdoor dining would be required to allow any applicable COVID nineteen protocols and all other applicable local, federal, state and federal laws and regulations. All outdoor dining would have to comply with accessibility requirements unless a modification were approved. And all fees would be waived for the duration of this ordinance. As of July first, this will be five hundred and sixty-six dollars for temporary use permits under the master fee schedule that you recently approved and a hundred dollars for sidewalk cafes and parklets. I would note that these fees can be covered by the Economic Development Fund. That fund has a surplus of money available for the business or rebate program, which currently pays for business license fees, cap rate permits, and things like that. There's enough money left in this in that fund for this fiscal year to cover these fees. Next slide, please. So for the duration of the ordinance, the urgency ordinance would take effect immediately, of course, and it would be in effect until the regular ordinance takes effect. The regular ordinance would take effect thirty days after its final passage. If you introduced it tonight, and if you pass it on July seventh, your next meeting, then it will take effect on August sixth. But neither ordinance would be operative until the county county health officer allows outdoor dining. As I previously said, the county's press release indicated that that would be this Friday, but we have yet to see the order. So whenever that order becomes operative would be when these ordinances would become operative. And then the regular ordinance would be effective for And then the regular ordinance would be effective for one year. Next slide, please. However, there is one little wrench in the works here. And that is that all outdoor dining requires a permit from the county department of environmental health. Staff would recommend that the council pass a motion in addition to these ordinances. Authorizing the city manager to send a letter to the board of supervisors requesting that the county permits be expedited. I would note that we had some correspondence today from one of the applicants for for outdoor dining. Who indicated that they spoke to the department of environmental health. And they are not particularly interested in outdoor seating as long as it doesn't involve food preparation. So normally a sidewalk cafe and a parklet would not allow food preparation. Our ordinance doesn't allow that. However, a temporary use permit. For outdoor dining on private property could include food preparation outdoors. But so we need to clarify that point, but we still want to send a letter to the board of supervisors urging them to expedite any county permits that may be required. Next slide, please. So our recommendation is that following this staff presentation and public testimony. That you adopt the urgency ordinance by at least a four-fifths vote of the entire council after a motion to read by title only. That you adopt the first reading of the regular ordinance after reading it by title only. And that you adopt a motion authorizing the city manager to send a letter to the county board of supervisors. Urging the expedited permitting for outdoor dining for restaurants and bars by the county department of environmental health. I would also like to note that there are typographical errors in both ordinances. There is no section four. So it goes straight from section three to section five. When assuming you pass these ordinances, when we finalize them, we will correct that numbering error. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Remember Donahue, go ahead.
What if some of these restaurants would like to have some, put up some wind blocks? Originally, parklets could include a wind block. And then what if also some of these restaurants would like to use outdoor heaters?
That would be fine. We've actually had a request for that at the public market. That can be included in the either the temporary use permit application or the parklet or sidewalk cafe application, whatever it is. All of those applications require them to give us a site plan and details of whatever they propose. I would note, however, that things like heaters may require a permit from the fire department or the building department. So we're not waiving any of those permitting requirements. That would still have to be looked at.
Okay.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions? Member bowders?
It's for the city attorney. We our motions on both of these ordinances would need to actually include what Charlie mentioned. We'd actually need to say that we're renumbering everything after section three to be consecutive from section three on, correct? We can't just ask staff to fix that. It has to be in the motion, I believe.
You're on mute, Mr. Medina.
Sorry about that. So what I would recommend is when you adopt the, if the council were to adopt the urgency ordinance. Or adopt the first reading of the non-urgency ordinance, that you make those adoptions with the clarification. That the numbering be corrected to reflect the correct numbering.
Okay. Great. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, let's get to my agenda here, so. I'll take public comment on items 12.6.1, which is. Sherry, do we have any public comment on that?
We have no online forums, but I do have one raised hand by Ryan Lau.
Great. Mr. Lau?
Good evening, Mayor Pats. Vice Mayor Martinez and council members, my name is Ryan Lau. External affairs representative from AC Transit. Like to speak to item 12.6 and all of the sub-numrings or whatnot. Regarding outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during COVID, the COVID pandemic. So we definitely commend the council's thoughtfulness around. Finding new and inventive ways to provide opportunities for the Emeryville restaurant industry to get back on its feet in the. Wake of this immense public health crisis. We can definitely appreciate the challenging circumstances that the restaurant industry finds itself. Considering that public transit has also been decimated during the pandemic. AC Transit is currently experiencing a 75% ridership loss. Slowly sort of creeping back up with the slowly reopening of businesses and whatnot. We do recognize that currently it doesn't look like there's any plans for. Sort of taking any vehicle lanes of travel for this. For this process. But we do just want to make sure that if there are any future plans for for taking a lane. That we can maybe provide input if that were the case. So just wanted to provide that comment and appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on this? Right.
Uh, no.
All right. I will look for discussion and a motion. Remember to make a motion or read by title only. Member Medina.
Yeah, I would like to discuss with my fellow council members and get feedback from the city attorney and Charlie Bryant, if this is legally possible. To extend the waiver of temporary use permit fees to gyms and fitness studios as well. As a parking lot workout aficionado myself, I can see where for gyms, this would become immediately very helpful. And they've also been hit extremely hard by this COVID-19 crisis. Maybe the city attorney or Charlie could tell us if this is doable. Just pop it in section three.
Right, right. I can address that. I think it could be inserted in section 3F that talks about the waiver of fees. And we could just add a sentence or a clause that says that fees for temporary use permits for. Outdoor fitness activities or whatever are also waived. For the duration of the ordinance. And put that in both ordinances.
I'm going to go to member bowders and then over to vice mayors. Remember bowders?
I just, I just asked if I was wanting to know if it was even necessary. Can't people, I mean, like the cross that people use the parking lot already, so for things like can't they do that or do we actually need that?
Well, whether or not they use it, need a temporary use permit is debatable. I haven't actually looked into their conditional use permit. It depends on whether their existing entitlement allows them to use the outdoor space. If it does, then they don't need any additional approval. But if it doesn't, then they might need a modification to their use permit or a temporary use.
So just to be clear, I just in this, I'm not, I'm not objecting to council member Medina. And I don't know what Vice Mayor Martinez wants to say, but I just, it's an interesting question for me. So we potentially would have a restriction on a gym using its own parking lot to let people go outside to do things like jumping jacks or stretches. Like that would potentially be outside the scope of their permit?
It could be. I mean, the parking lot is supposed to be used for parking. So and usually a conditional use permit has some description of what the use is. Often the applicant will provide a narrative that describes what their proposed use is. And the conditions of approval might incorporate that narrative by reference. And if it doesn't include outdoor, you know, classes or whatever, then technically that wouldn't be included in their entitlement.
It makes sense. I just did not know that. I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
I really like the imagery.
Hold on, hold on. It is member Vice Mayor Martinez's turn.
No, I actually just had the exact same question that member bowders had and. I think it was answered. Thank you.
Great. Now, member Donahue.
Well, I like the imagery of parklets having outdoor classes like. You know, a parklet could fit a spinning class, for example, with equipment out there. Easily wheeled out and it would just look fabulous and there'd still be six foot distance between them. Would add lots of energy to our streets. I mean, you know, in a parking place. And so I'm excited about this. Think it's a good.
If I could just respond to that. I think I would ask if the proposal is simply to to cover the fees for. A fitness facility using its own parking lot, using a temporary use permit if needed. I think that, you know, I don't have any concerns about the council doing that tonight. But if you are going to expand this type of use into the right-of-way. That I think I would ask that we have a little bit more of an opportunity to analyze that. It's a different type of use in the right-of-way than a restaurant would be.
Thank you. I also feel like once you take a spin class outside, now you're on a bicycle, go somewhere.
Oh, I'm not on mute.
That's okay. I wasn't either and I should have been. Member bowders, you're up.
Thank you. I mean, this has been, I'm glad we're near the end of the evening. This is a good, a good dialogue, but now I mean, on the last, no, I lost my train of thought. On the last point, though. City manager, the right-of-way and the and the and your, I appreciate your response to member Donahue about. You know, council member Medina's suggestion about adding what I heard was parking lots and like these spaces. And then he kind of, you know, took it to the right-of-way and you were kind of trying to differentiate. But I have a question because your argument against his request was the safety of the public. But I mean, so let's imagine a parklet like right now, right? So let's put a few dining tables in a couple parking spaces. People are parking on both ends of it, right? Like, do we have a minimum set of criteria? Like, is there some hardscaped barricade? That keeps, you know, bad driver X who's parked at one end of the the parklet. From backing their car into a table, right? Like, I mean, like, because that, that's the kind of stuff that I'm, I'm, you know, I want to expand this program. I think this is a good idea. But I heard you give a safety response to people who are exercising and I just want to know, like, what's the difference between people who are seated at a table?
Um, actually, I was trying to address the use. The people who are seated in a parklet are already very similar to the people who will be seated at a table in a parklet. So those uses I think are similar. People tossing kettlebells, jumping ropes, throwing things. Medicine balls. There's a whole variety of things, I think, that happen at a gym that are of different nature of a use. Next to a pedestrian walkway than a restaurant.
Okay, that that was very helpful to, and by the way, I don't mind if people throw kettleballs and it discourages parking near their space, but that's me.
Okay, no one is supposed to throw a kettlebell. Just so we're clear, you sway them, you're not supposed to let go. This is not an approved kettlebell use, nor what I am suggesting here, everyone.
So again, we're talking about authorizing my use of parklets, not what you guys want to do with parklets.
My narrow request was that we expand this, as Charlie said, in section F. To also include fitness studios and gyms in the waiver for permit fees to use their own parking spaces. I would love to work out in a parklet, but I could see all sorts of liability and just practical issues with that. Especially given how bad our city council seems to be with kettlebell swing.
I'm more interested in the flipping of the tire than kettlebells, but that's just me. Vice Mayor Martinez, please.
Thank you. Charlie, is there an analysis on how long it would take if we were to approve all of these actions? For a business to apply for the permit and then get through the process, assuming, you know, they don't need any additional.
Um, well, as a matter of fact, we are currently processing three or four of these already. In anticipation of this, a number of businesses has stepped forward and have said they want to do this. How long that's going to take, I don't know. But I would note that in the ordinance, there is a provision where you are directing staff to process these. Expeditiously, consistent with other city priorities. So, you know, I can't really say how long each one will take. It kind of depends on how involved they are, but on the order of a week or two, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I will look to a motion for read by title only. A member Medina?
I will move to read by title only with the adoption.
It's just the title. You can make the changes when we do the. I'll second the motion. Are you doing the urgency or the regular ordinance?
Sorry, this is the regular ordinance, the urgency is next.
I'll second her motion then to read by title only their regular ordinance.
Councilmember bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville temporarily waiving or modifying certain provisions of the planning regulations. Related to outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID-19 pandemic. With a secret determination of exempt pursuant to California Resources Code, section 21080 sub B4. And state sequel guidelines 15269 sub C and 15061 sub B3.
Okay, so before we take the motion, which I'm going to come back to member Medina for. The motion is going to include two things, as I understand it, per addition and the staff's going to renumber. Did I capture everything there? I see two nods. I see some from member Medina. Go ahead and unmute and give me the motion.
No move.
And a second for member bowders?
Second.
Vote, please.
Councilmember bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, before we do the emergency, the urgency ordinance, I do want to go back to public comment on this. And then we'll have our same discussion, our emotions. Any public comment on 12.6.2?
There are none at this time.
Great. I'll take discussion or a motion to read by title only.
We should read by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to read by title only.
Councilmember bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez? I'm going to take that as an aye and Mayor Pats?
Aye.
An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville temporarily waiving or modifying certain provisions of the planning regulations. Related to outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID-19 pandemic. Secret determination exempt pursuant to California Resources Code, section 21021080 sub B4. And state sequel guidelines 15269 sub C and 15061 sub B3.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the urgency ordinance and it's more important on this one that we get it right. Because we won't really have that same second reading. So two caveat, the same two additions are in in the motion. Member bowders, are you making that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve this urgency ordinance. By authorizing staff to renumber the sections to make them consecutive and to include. Councilmember Medina's prior request to amend section F to include gyms and workout facilities to be added.
Excellent.
Second.
Great.
Councilmember bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Thank you, guys. I think that's really important. Department head reports is next.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we have any this evening.
Excellent. Future agenda items. Member bowders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to revisit the with councilmember Medina's prior good request that we addressed the BPAC recommendation. I would just like an accompanying future agenda item to agenda. I'm going to go so far as to say to consolidate. I'm not going to ask for a study of it because there used to be a traffic committee. We split transportation and public safety, blah, blah, blah. And then they like they kind of fractured and the public safety exists. And then we had a transportation committee and then we merged public works with it. And so it just doesn't make sense to have two committees and all this. I just like to have an agenda item to merge the two committees.
Okay, thank you. I'll support that.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We don't want to set up a committee to talk about merging committees?
No, we just know we need to do it. We don't need to have all that paperwork.
Great. Any other future agenda items? Member Medina?
Yes, I'd like to have my councilmember support to ask staff to prepare legislation for a general tax. Hold on, for transportation network company users at a rate of 50 cents for private rides and 25 cents for pooled rides. To go on the November 2020 ballot and to bring that back on our July 7th meeting. That is substantially in conformance with Berkeley and Oakland ballot measures.
I support.
I had to write that all down.
So we have, you have three supports at least. I haven't heard from member Donahue.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Do you want to say it slower?
No. No, it's okay. He'll get it all when we discuss it thoroughly at a meeting.
It's a TNC, it's a TNC text, Scott, for riders.
Okay.
Or member bowders can explain it to you now. Um, both of those work.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items? Okay, I have one. We talked at our last meeting about having a study session um to talk about policing and to address the items. I've sort of collected them and added a couple. And I think I'd like to spend a few minutes now doing two things. One, before I forget again, did we authorize the city manager to write that letter?
Which letter?
Can we do that right now?
Which which letter, Mr. Mayor?
The one to expedite the, it's, I'm sorry, the letter from the last.
Oh, the motion from the last thing?
Yeah, do we need, can we do that?
I'll just do it.
You'll just do it. Everybody comfortable?
If everyone just raises their hand, we all just, we support it.
I I realized we, I forgot that and I, again, coming back around, so I'd like to um I would like to uh take out your calendars and look for a time and a date that we can hold the study session. I'm talking about having it not attached to one of these meetings, but doing it in July. I'm throwing out there a Thursday, like in the afternoon. Um, I feel like we are all more flexible with our work schedules than ever. And I'll look to Ms. Daniels to see if she had, Ms. Daniel, to see if she had a date in mind.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I I did have a chance to talk to Chief Schreeder a little bit today. He he has a he has some uh family stuff um that he needs to do the week of just lost my calendar, the thirteenth. Um, so if we're looking at a Thursday, it would, I think, better maybe July twenty-third.
Mr. Mayor, I regret that's the only day I cannot do. That's a Thursday because that's the all-day meeting for ACTC.
Oh, that's your.
And I'm scheduling the entire budget for CIP this year. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm looking in July, so um, well, it doesn't have to be a Thursday. That was just what you and I had talked about.
What about Monday, the twentieth, perhaps? Or Wednesday, the twenty-second? Wednesday, the twenty-second might be a little bit better for staff, just to have this time to prepare.
I'm good with that. Member bowders?
Uh, air district meetings, I have four committee meetings between nine and one thirty, but if it's after, so if we say after two o'clock, I can do them on that day. Yeah.
I have a meeting at three on that day.
I'm sorry, what?
I have a board meeting at three on the twenty-second.
So how about Monday, the twentieth?
I, that is good for me.
Anything afternoon on the twentieth is fine for me right now.
And later in the afternoon preferable for me.
So you don't have to wake up early?
No, because I don't know what the state senate hearing schedule is. Nobody knows.
He's always got you, Ellie. He's always got you.
Remember, Donahue, does that work with your calendar?
Yeah, yes, it does.
All right, so do we say one or two on the twentieth?
About two.
Two o'clock on the twentieth it is. Sold. I appreciate you guys is indulging me on that. And with that, I see it at nine forty. We are adjourned.
Thank you for another great meeting, Mr. Mayor.